Good evening, the time is six thirty-three, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation please?
Good evening, everyone. Habbah, we just give you thanks for keeping us safe another day. We ask that you be in the midst of this meeting. We also ask for wisdom, your wisdom, Lord, as we meet to discuss the needs of the city. As we go forth to allocate the funds to meet those needs. We ask that you give us clear minds and a peaceful heart as we gather together tonight. And we just thank you for your love and your guidance and your protection in all things we do. Bless the city, the city employees, the citizens and those associated with the city, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, Madam Clegg, do the roll call please.
Certainly, Councilwoman Fareed. Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Giel?
Here.
Councilman Hairston? Don't see him. Councilman Herring?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
And Council President Curtis?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm moved.
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved by Ferguson, is there a second? Councilwoman Jones, did you want a second since you?
Second.
Alright.
Yeah, I'll second, I thought I came in first, but that's okay, I'll second whoever has gone in, it's alright.
Alright, any discussion? Or opposition? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the agenda is hereby adopted. First on the agenda, council members, this is a budget work session, first on agenda is Public Works. This, if you just want to do the overall summary and then I'll open it up to the council questions.
Sure. Oh shoot. Can you, let me just, I just locked my screen, sorry, okay.
No worries.
For the FY twenty-four budget, since I came in in March and the budget was pretty much underway, I asked that each department prepare a narrative. There is obviously a lot of money that we're reviewing. Always the question that a manager asks is, well, what are we doing with that money and what are we achieving? And so I would turn your attention to the narrative for Public Works and specifically the budget initiatives. They are, of course, going to be responsible for completing the ARPA project, seven hundred thousand for road milling and resurfacing and for replacing broken curbs, gutters and sidewalks, speedhump installation and construction of ADA compliant sidewalk ramps. The special projects that you'll see on your narrative include, obviously, the elevator that's going to be monitored and championed by Public Works. They will also be involved with the construction of a new public safety building, responsible for a tree canopy survey, conducting an inventory of all trees in the city, arranging for that. Installation of new cameras in City Hall, replacement of door locks and vinyl flooring, which the vinyl flooring is probably going to happen, I think, under this year's budget. And then, of course, one of the things that I'm recommending is fleet planning to begin converting the city vehicles from gasoline fossil fuel vehicles to electric vehicles or other alternative fuel vehicles. And then, of course, they'll, Public Works should have a big role in planning for the Seventh Street Park. So with that, I will answer any questions you might have. Most of the initiatives were drafted by Charles Simpson, but the fleet planning was my my baby in terms of trying to move us towards that at some point.
Senator Mayor Habada, are there any questions from council members? Relative to the budget for Public Works?
The narrative, yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes. Public Works, I see, I know y'all mentioned this before, snow removal, you're reducing it by twenty thousand. Because what?
Okay, if you're ready to get into the numbers, I'll turn that over to Mr. Simpson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and residents. So yes, sir, Mr. Herring, the goal is to take on the snow removal. As I think we mentioned in one previous meeting. And again, that is contingent upon being able to have, being fully staffed and trained as well as having the vehicles to be able to cover that. That's the intention and desire moving forward. Wanting to leave money available to supplement or if there was some type of issue to help with snow removal. As I was talking with the treasurer before, even in the event of a major snow emergency, it can vary. But the goal and the hope for us is to take on that snow removal and hopefully save costs.
Okay, I guess my feeling is we should maintain a snow contract. We haven't done this before, we haven't done it on our own, we've already had a snow contract. And I don't think this is the time where we need to be, we need to phase it in versus just cutting the budget in half. We don't know what snow is what we want to have, so I think that's actually just say forty thousand dollars. And RFP needs to go out for snow removal. And we can work toward what you're talking about because, again, we're in June, July, August, September, so, you know, I don't see this happening, but we can do it ourselves within this budget year, really. So I think that, I think I know we need to go right up to forty thousand and we need to move forward putting out a RFP for snow removal. That's not failing on that.
I wouldn't disagree with you. There, I'm staying.
Councilman Herring, has said all?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council members? Thank you, Vice President Ferguson?
I just wanted to say that I concur with Councilman Herring. Think we should keep the budget as it is and phase that type of service and.
Thanks, Vice President Ferguson, Councilman Giel?
Thank you, Council President, I just wanted to say that I do, I too agree with what Councilman Herring stated and what he and Mr. Simpson actually discussed right now as far as phasing it in. So I agree with Councilman Herring and Vice President Ferguson, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move on to the administrative budget?
Just want to say I agree with Councilman Herring and the rest of the colleagues, so, like.
Thank you. Do I see your hand, is this relative to Public Works before we move on to administration?
Yes, it is, it's with regard, especially with regard to what we're discussing now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we will be phasing in that service that we will be offering as a city. Does this hamper any capital purchasing that we're going to do? We're going to bring this back to the forty thousand is what I'm hearing. But does this affect any of the capital purchasing that we're going to do with regard to the to buying the vehicles and the parts needed and the training necessary to get the guys up to speed to do this work?
I believe this is separate, I don't, I think, Council, well, I don't want to speak to Councilman Herring, Councilman, did she want to?
No, I mean, I think, I mean, everything should stay in place, but I think, I mean, because if we want to phase it in, we got to have all those, have all those tools available, training, the equipment and what have you, I'm just, yeah, I just think that, I mean, we need to move forward with that. I am concerned about the dump truck thing, didn't have a dump truck in his budget. You know, the dump truck in his budget? Or did we take, I don't see it, that we did. Yes, the dump truck is still in the budget. It's in the capital section.
In capital.
And what it is, it's a tipper truck that they'll be using to do most of the the movements that they have to do. Charles, you want to speak a little more on that?
Phasing snow removal as well as assisting, today we, we had a bunch of tree limbs. We were able to utilize a trailer, it took a couple of trips. If we can get a dump truck, we're able to work more efficiently from our landscaping to several other items. Being able to move some of the larger things opposed to having to deal with a contractor to help us with moving that. And of course, as we phase into wanting to handle the snow removal, that truck would be valuable, I would say valuable with being able to put a salt spreader on it and having enough salt for us to treat streets during, you know, snow emergency, nice situation.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Is that the sixty-two thousand dollar truck?
It's actually, I have requested we adjust that to seventy K.
The truck or plow spreader, you want seventy thousand for that?
I want to be able to purchase the truck at seventy K and be able to get a salt spreader, as you said, phase that in, salt spreader and a plow.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think, I mean, if you're going to phase it in, I think it needs to stay in the budget. Because you're going to need the training and stuff, I mean, so when the next snow, at least when the next snow, so, I mean, we get to this first season, maybe by next season, we'll be ready to do it ourselves, at least we'll know for sure.
Okay. Alright. Moving on to the administration, Senator Mayor Habada, would you like to go over your narrative?
Sure. I've got a number of special projects listed and some of them cover admin and, admin and specifically finance. Special projects include purchasing of electric bus to provide transportation for seniors. We're having a difficult bus problem right now, trying to find a loner from the county. And so right now, what we're doing is getting a small, what's called a caravan, it's a three-seater, until they can present us with a loner bus. So the goal for twenty-four is we have money in the budget to match the VW mitigation funds that will apply for, for the state to pay eighty percent of it and the city would pay twenty percent. The treasurer is looking to obtain new governmental accounting and budgeting software for city finance. In terms of initiatives, some of this you already know, expansion to code enforcement services, we talked about that. The redesign of the city website is actually taking place now. Implementing a recycling program at City Hall for paper, cans and plastic. And, let's see, what else? Oh, one thing that, you know, would appreciate some feedback on is research and adoption of a city stat format so that residents and the mayor and council can track stats on services that are coming out of city departments. Something similar to what former mayor of Baltimore had started, who became the governor, O'Malley, that's the name. He had done for the city of Baltimore. I think would be helpful for folks to know how their funds are being spent in terms of the results they're beginning. So we're going to research that to see what might be available. And of course, pursue funding for construction of a new police station and move on implementing the American Rescue Plan projects that council have, has has indicated by resolution. The big one for me is going to be rebidding the city trash service to move from this one-year extended contract with the current provider to a five-year term with possible two-year contract renewal options. And we'll need to know from council if a five-year is something you're comfortable with or a shorter term. So that is pretty much the narrative side and we'll, I guess we'll go now to the the budget figures itself. Some of this in terms of conference and training and memberships are self-explanatory, I think. The one that I'm not clear on and need some help from the council, because I don't, I have not been, had the time to identify certain things. The special events, what's listed there is code thirty-five hundred dollars and that may be from a prior year. Then you have sustainable environment, small business, PPE, health emergency, this may be carryover from a prior year. Prior years when we were actively in COVID. So if anyone can enlighten me on any special events that comes out of the admin office, I'd appreciate it. Everything else, I think, office supplies, you know, communications, phone and that kind of thing. All bus repairs, you know, we don't have a bus right now. And the election, I'm assuming that is related to getting ready for a new cycle of elections, getting prepared a year in advance or however that works. So the one question I would ask council for help on is the special events.
Yeah, and I'll, you know, call on the mayor and the treasurer because I believe, you know, they're all involved, but if, if council members know what that is, invite them to as well. But I just didn't want, you know, to put council on the spot as if though. Because overall, as Councilman Herring said before, this is overall the mayor's budget that's being presented to us, so. Councilman Herring, I see that you're unmuted, did you have something to say?
Oh, sorry, unmuted.
Okay, Mayor Cross?
Thank you, and thank you, Council President and City Manager Habada. Traditionally, there isn't any special events that the administration does except for if you want to do code book distribution. And we do need to update our city codes so that would be part of the budget. The reproduction and ensuring that each citizen gets a copy. Also, you would do any, like, when we did have COVID, we gave out PPE. So those are things that the administration would do. If you wanted to do notifications or have an open house, say, as we're building a new police department, you want to help with an open house of some sort, that's, that's really what you have. But this is sustainable environment, if you wanted to do like a program, bring in somebody who talks about butterfly sanctuaries and things like that and they ask for a fee. I mean, these are things that you would be able to do in sustainable environments. Small businesses, if you wanted to run a small business conference because you are the executive arm administratively of the city, you could run a small business conference to attract business, potential business industries to the city of Glen Arden. We've got some spaces in Woodmore Town Center if you want to bring in folks. So you would use it in that way, relative to special events like Harvest Day Rewind, Oh Give Thanks. Traditionally, those things have sit under the mayor's budget because they are people creature things. You do administrative corporate thing, if that makes sense, thank you.
I don't know if that answers the question of the seventeen thousand, but I just looked at some notes. It says that it's per trend line, so I still don't know what it is, so. Sorry.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there were things mandated by the council that the admin do for special events.
There. There may be some special events that the administration wants to do, but open the floor to any comments from the council that's based on entire budget and any insight on special events. Well, I'm sorry, Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, I don't see any problem in having a budget to do certain events as it pertains to the citizens, or the seniors or I thought that it was, that the city manager had a budget for events. Councilman Herring, could you help me with that?
There would usually be a small budget that they would have, many forms and outreach. But I thought this budget was basically, I mean, like, the police department, I know they have their own line item, but it seems like when they do a community-wide event, it should come from this budget. They did a community-wide cookout and whatever. I'm not sure, I mean, it used to be a small thing for the city manager, really, to hold forms, other forms, if they come out. Information of forms. Seventeen thousand dollars, this. I don't know.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Miss Councilman Herring, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, I'm done, I'm done, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm done.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the, the amount that's in the budget, I think it was in reference to what is listed there. I don't think necessarily a seventeen thousand budget would be required, but I think that if the city manager has new ideas that would benefit the city or the citizens, that she should be able to at least present them or have a little budget, that's my opinion. Not necessarily, you know, it doesn't have to be seventeen-five, but I don't have a problem with her having a budget to do some events. In reference to what Councilman Herring said and, you know, if there's something else that she has in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, I was just going to say briefly that, you know, we've talked about doing things for our seniors and possibly that can be used to, I know that an idea was thought around of having, you know, senior yoga day or, but having something that's catered to the citizens of Glen Arden, particularly our seniors for them to come out and, you know, do different things, but, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, I'm just thinking, when we did the budget the last time, we moved, special events, we moved most of the special events such as the Oh Give Thanks and, not Oh Give Thanks, but some of the other things that was under the executive office budget, they were, the events were moved to the administrative office because the administration was the one that was really particularly doing all the work for those things. But at this juncture, if with Ms. Habada now in place, if she wants to develop a program so she sees something coming along, I think seventeen-five is a bit much. Maybe we could back that up to maybe, was what, ten before? And before that, it was twenty-five hundred. So I think when we made it, when we moved those special events into the administrative budget from the executive budget, that's how they got that additional amount of money. If we're still going to do that, move some of those events out of the executive budget and put them into the administrator for them to handle, then, of course, seventeen-five would be good. But if not, I would move it back to ten until, at least to have something in the budget for Ms. Habada to develop or see that a need to have monies to do special events from the administration. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Councilwoman Fareed?
Sorry, I couldn't come off of mute fast enough. Um, yeah, I just, you know, just speaking about special events, I know I mentioned this last year as well. If you look at the collective amount for special events across all of the different department budgets, it's like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, a little more than that. And I'm wondering if we should really just take a holistic view of the events that we are doing. I know that everyone in the government tries to participate in all of the events, so I'm not, I'm not sure that it matters whether, you know, whose budget the event comes out. I really just think that there should be a single city special events budget and that the events that we do are collaborative and, you know, making sure that all of the events that we're doing are for the benefit of the citizens of the city, because I know that there's been some question around that as well. I mean, this way we can probably trim back some of that amount of money that is being spent on, you know, special events, a hundred and twenty-three thousand out of our overall budget is quite a bit on events, in my opinion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed, Councilman Giel?
Thank you, Council President, I actually wanted to circle back a little bit and state that what Councilwoman Jones stated is what I actually recall as far as how we got to the seventeen-five number, which I believe is the initial question that Ms. Habada had originally asked, which was about that number in the special events line item. Now, I too, I also agree further with Councilwoman Jones as far as, I'm not opposed to having, you know, if seventeen-five there, but if we feel that it can be lessened to fifteen or knowing that it was ten and something else, I'm not sure. But I'm not opposed to, if we're trying to decrease from a certain amount. I have two more things. One thing is just a general thing and it has nothing to do with the budget, but it has to do with our city manager. City manager, is your last, the pronunciation of your last name, Habada or Habada? I just want to make sure that we.
Okay. It's Habada, but I'll respond to anything.
Okay, no, 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 I just want to make sure that either ones of us were saying it correctly or not, so, okay, so, got that. And the second thing that I wanted to ask was, Councilman Fareed, and I apologize because I know that there was an email trail, but to the point that you just made about having like a blanket, for lack of a better word, special events line item that's citywide, right? Do we recall or do you recall what that number was that was presented to us for last year's events? I know you mentioned one hundred and twenty-three thousand right now, but do you recall what that number was just in comparison to what we have in the budget versus what we did last year?
No, I don't remember what it was because we didn't have just, it was the same thing last year, there was no overall amount that was provided for a special event, it was broken up across the different, across the different departments. But if we look at the amounts that are in each department, many of them are not changing much from the previous year, so I would say it's roughly the same.
Got it, got it, and I will, well, you know what, I'll wait till we get to that part of the budget. So it's in regards to special events, but I'll wait till another section of the budget is addressed, so, thank you for that, thank you, Council President, as well.
Thank you, Councilman Giel. Councilman Fareed, is that a new hand or old hand?
Old hand, I'll take it down, sorry.
Okay, alright, thank you. Um, so I just want to say that I too agree with somehow centralizing special events. And it's, you know, the city's having it, so it doesn't necessarily, you know, matter where it comes from. That's how we do it, that's another question. The only other comment I had was for the election board of forty-three thousand dollars. Now, it's my understanding, so this, this budget will be from Ju- July, I'm sorry, July twenty-twenty-three to June twenty- Ju- July tw- I'm sorry, July twenty-twenty-three to June twenty-twenty-four. And we'll be gearing up for the election uh between July twenty-twenty-four. And June twenty-twenty-five, so do we need, I don't think, and you correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we need forty-three thousand dollars in the budget for the um for the election board in in this current year. Upcoming year, Councilwoman Gill.
So I was focusing only on special events, but I too have some questions about that, and you beat me to the punch, Council President, because I was trying to do the timing. And even certain things such as voting machines, like, and again, maybe it's because I am a newly elected um councilperson, I don't. Know if voting machines are purchased a year prior or at least a year prior, but. Forty-three thousand dollars for a non-election year seems to be um a lot. So just any any insight that can be provided on that will be very helpful. Thank you.
Mister Stewart. Would you want to provide some insight?
Um, so, we had moved the forty-three thousand out of the budget. But um I think the mayor can give us a little bit more um clarity on why we were asked to. Put it back there, thank you.
Mayor Cross.
Thank you, uh, Mister President, and thank you um to the treasurer, so, we did put that in there by August. Of twenty-twenty-four, uh, we must have the Board of Election um selection process began. So with that, um, there are certain things. That we can put in just in case the budget next year is not as efficient as we're doing it right now. And we have to carry over, then we'll have it there, so, uh, it's kind of like a cushion, we don't have to put that much, I do agree. Uh, we can even drop it down to twenty thousand, uh, but that is something that we need to have there, just in case. Uh, the budget next year uh goes beyond the one July, and then we have to carry over with the previous year budget, that's the only reason why.
So, uh, Councilwoman Fareed, I see your hand, but I saw um uh Councilman Harry, no, mute his. Mic first, Councilman Harry, does you have?
Yes, I, yeah, I wanted to say, um, yeah, this is a off year, we really shouldn't have anything in that budget for elections, because, again, if we're looking at. Twenty August of twenty-twenty-four, we'll be under the uh twenty-twenty-five budget, which we will pass, when I think we will pass it by August. So I don't think, I think that's a lot of money that is just sitting there, we're we're not gonna use it at all, you don't need it. On a on a off year, I mean, when we do the twenty-twenty-five budget, you would throw money in there for the election, but now you don't need it at all, really. I mean, I don't, I've I've never seen us put any money in there for the election on an off year.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Fareed.
Yeah, I just wanted to to echo that, it it just, it seemed a little uh premature to put in there, but. But more so the rationale being in case you don't pass the budget in time, we've already talked about the need to. Do this earlier, so I think the emphasis should be placed on making sure that the budget is done. Sooner, so that there's no chance that it can't be passed by July first, but for, and certainly forty-three thousand dollars is a significant amount of money. As a placeholder for just in case.
Yeah, uh, and Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you, Council President, just wanted to echo and for for a matter of record that I agree with. What was just previously stated by Councilwoman Fareed and Councilman Haring, thank you.
Yeah, alright, so, uh, thus far, uh, unless there are any more. Comments about the administrative budget. Alright, so thus far, uh, Mister Stewart. Vice President Ferguson, I didn't know if you would raise your hand or clap your hands.
I don't know what I'm doing, but uh on that, I raised the hand, because it that you went on, but um, so basically, the forty-three is coming out.
Correct, what I have so far is the forty-three being removed. Uh, and I still think the special event is sticky, but for right now, it's uh been lowered to ten thousand to we. Handle how we're gonna handle events overall, but those are the only two um adjustments I have currently.
So, yeah, that was my other question, so is uh reduced to ten thousand?
Yes, un- unless, unless, you know, by, you know, uh consensus. We house uh all of us special events in one particular department, but we'll see how that goes.
Thank you.
Alright, so Mister Stewart, so, the the only edits were the removal of the forty-three thousand dollars for the Board of Elections. Uh, and uh reducing the special events from seventeen five to ten thousand.
Got it.
Are there any other comments as it relates to the administrative budget? Yeah, thank you. With that being said, and I'm sorry, uh, Miss Councilwoman Gill, can you see the budget on your screen?
I can, and initially my hand was up a long time ago, it was because I was like, can we show the budget on the screen, so I can, but my eyes are. Not good, so if we can make it a little bit bigger, it'll be very helpful for me, thank you.
To mind, I knew that's why your hand was raised. And and I didn't know that I wasn't sharing my screen at that point, so I saw, when I saw your hand, I was like, I'm not sharing my screen. Alright, um, next up is the Finance Department. But Stewart, you raised your hand pretty quickly, are you ready to go over your narrative or is this a question?
Uh, uh, no, I wanted to go back to the um, to the Public Works. Section, um, today, um, Charles and I had a discussion about the. Uniform, um, the amount we have. In uniform is seven thousand nine twenty, this is on page eighteen. Um, he's requesting that we bring it up by twenty-eight hundred up to ten thousand five hundred. I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case, um, you know, we'd like to move that to ten thousand five hundred.
What's the rationale behind the the increase?
Um, Charles, can you um elaborate on this?
Yes, uh, so, we have saved money in being able to adjust the uniform agreement with Centos. Um, uh, from what I understand, we also do a book bill for the seasons, that wasn't fully equated, so that initial. Amount just covered um just that uniform uh amount at that particular time. And uh, we also need to make sure we are offering winter thermal coveralls, which will. Be an additional cost through Centos, um, but it'll be an additional cost, but not during the entire um. Uh, year.
Any opposition to us increasing that to ten five? Here none, Mister Stewart, you can increase it to ten five.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I got a question.
Councilwoman Jones.
Okay, so you're talking about uh line items eighty-four fifty, uniforms and protective equipment?
Yes.
That's my.
I left that, yeah.
Okay, so, right now, what is it having there, twelve thousand, I can't see, because, wait a minute, I can, I can fix that. Alright, there we go, okay. So, the seventy-nine hundred dollars that's in there now, you wanna increase that by ten thousand?
No, not by ten thousand, but to ten thousand five.
Oh, to ten thousand, okay, okay, alright, I just wanted to get clarify, and then the uniforms, they they pick them up and they clean them and they bring them back and. And 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 we, you know, they come in and out.
Yes, they monitor, make sure that they're clean and available for the the guys.
Okay, alright, I always wondered about that, but thank you.
Yes, my, uh, Councilwoman Jones, it's at least programmed through Centos, and they do the cleansing, they provide enough uniforms, you know, for for at least two weeks.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Just one question, uh, briefly, Ms. Abada, I know that last week we met with um a gentleman. That was uh representative company that was going to implement the salary classification. So just wanna remind uh council members that, you know, the salary component of it uh will be addressed. Um, it's something separate, uh, but we're waiting on that, uh, I believe the classification uh system. Uh, and then, uh, once we're able to digest that, then we can, you know. Opine and come to uh an agreement on the salary component of these budgets, so, um, Councilwoman Gill.
So, thank you, Council President, I was going to actually ask about if we could scroll up to where the salary section was for personal expenditures, but you. But you're talking about that section, right, because is this page nine on your document, yeah, keep going up.
This is page eighteen, I went to the public works, if I can go back to page nine.
Okay, were we on page nine at all, at one point, yeah, this is, so you're talking about this section, correct, the personal, the, I'm sorry, personnel expenditures, we're going to. Circle back on this.
Yes.
At a later date, okay, that's helpful, thank you, because I have some questions, so thank you.
And Ms. Abada, have we heard back from them yet?
Uh, yes, uh, they have started their work, and uh I think we're gonna hear something in about uh two weeks.
Okay.
Hear back from them in about two weeks, as I recall it, if uh. Uh, Karen Schultz is on this call, I think I'm correct in that, is that right, Karen?
Yes, ma'am, um, I talked with Dave. Two year Wednesday, and he received all the information, and um they are working on them, he just said within the next two weeks.
Yeah, well. That's fine, you know, I heard n- next week, uh, I don't know if anybody else heard next week.
No, I said two weeks.
No, no.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
He said that he can have it to us by next week, because it it shouldn't be that difficult to implement. So, uh, if you guys can communicate that and let him know that, you know, this, this is a. A important piece of our budget, uh, and if we want this to be passed on time, which I think every council member here does, um, you know. Then I will hope that he could. I mean, because next, this, then there'll be three weeks, so that would have missed the mark by two weeks, so if they can, you know, prioritize us, that would be great.
Okay, I'll, I will reach back out to him um in the morning.
And and let him know what he said.
Yes, sir.
Next week.
Yes, sir, I'll do that.
Alright.
Alright.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, um, okay, I'm looking at, um. We're talking about taking the uniforms up to ten five, is that what we said, is that what was just said?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm I'm looking at the actuals for twenty-twenty-three. Um, the spreadsheet that we got from the treasurer, and as of March. They spent, um. Nine thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars on uniforms, and you still had. But three more months to go in the in in the year, so is ten five really reasonable, especially if you're gonna upgrade to uh winter wear? The previous budget was twelve thousand.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, um, sir, so initially, um, the lease agreement was maybe twice as much. Uh, until we renegotiated it, um, I think at the beginning of the year. Um, so it went from about three hundred and fifty-two dollars, and and Dean, you can, if you remember the number. Um, please chime in, uh, a week to the one thirty-one, uh, fully with with having everyone stay. So that's why I'm saying we were able to make that adjustment.
Yes, and and I could, and I could um confirm that, um, since Charles have come in. He has managed to negotiate that and cut that fee by fifty percent. You know, it was three hundred and something dollars, now it's a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty, you know, so that was good, given that we are thinking. That we were able to cut it down to nine, to seven thousand, but then, um, after some discussion. We realized that we need to bring it up to at at most ten thousand five hundred.
You said the renegotiated price is that, how long is it, a fixed price for a number of years or what?
Yes, sir, I believe it's definitely for the first two to three years, and then you renegotiate. That contract, I can get that information and I'll send it over to you, uh, if you give me a moment, I'll try to pull it up.
Alright, I mean, I just wanted to make sure we, you're putting up in a budget for what you needed for, compared to what we were spending it on, so, alright, thank you.
Sir, thank you.
Mayor. Go back to the administrators, thank you, are there any um more questions on the administrative? Budget. Oh, I'm sorry, we have moved on to the finance, uh. Into, alright, well, uh, finance. Mister Stewart, is there, was there in there?
I'm sorry, but no, there was no um narrative, but did you notice I was a little slow in putting up my hand this time?
And that's fine.
Yes, yes.
That's okay, so, we can just take, um, you know, questions for the finance. Portion, uh, anybody know what page that is?
That is page thirteen.
Thirteen. Okay. Doors open for uh to the council members as it relates to the finance budget?
Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, um. So, we are expecting an audit, the council audit to go up, uh, for the next, for twenty-twenty-four. Or twenty-twenty, yeah, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, yes, um, we, I have the audit schedule, and we are expecting the. Audit for twenty-twenty-four to be twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay. I'm good.
As it relates to the accounting software, software maintenance, support, equipment, um, is. Is this for the implementation, and if so, shouldn't that be in in capital projects?
Uh, yes, it should be in capital budget, but I put it here specifically so that we could talk about it. Now, one other thing we're doing, this amount, the six to six thousand, does include the system that we are currently using as well. Uh, but the quotes that I've been getting from different um vendors with regard to the accounting system. Um, is like between fifty to fifty-five thousand, which is not bad, and I'm talking about full implementation. Which includes training, um, ensuring that the system runs, um, and in most cases. Two to three years worth of um of um what they call customer service. So this amount is um the amount, I believe, should be reasonable to take us through that um process.
Then what portion should be subtracted from here and put it in the capital portion?
So, if we're gonna move any amount, it would be like fifty-five thousand, because the accounting system is like between seven thousand. To eight thousand per year, the one that we are actually using now. Yes.
Alright. So, the question I have, any other comments, concerns, questions from the council? Alright. Here we none, we'll keep this train going to the legislature, Mister Stewart, if you can help me, what page is that on?
That is on page. Forty, uh, legislative, you say, sorry, that's on page. Twelve.
Wow, thank you.
Twelve or four?
Twelve.
Yeah, I have.
Let's see, sorry.
Alright, legislators, uh. This thing, I don't. Okay, sorry. Any questions on the budget for the legislative section? Councilwoman Farid.
Yes, I know I sent some comments over about a week or so ago, because I don't see some of the items that were passed. In resolution included here, um, like the. Community garden and the um. Farmer's market. I saw you responded back, Dean, but I real I don't, sorry, Mr. Stewart, but I don't remember what your response was as to where those would go.
Yes, and um it was a question, um, Councilwoman Farid, that it's a good question, but. We were trying to figure out which department would be responsible for those um. Those projects. Are you saying now that you would want it to be in the council?
Well, I don't, I I'm saying that I don't, I don't have a preference, I guess.
Yes.
I I see those things the same as events, like, I don't know. I don't know if they would necessarily need to go under legislation, legislative, sorry, I'm just saying they were passed by resolution, so. I expect to see them in the budget um somewhere.
Yes, so in other discussion with um with Abada, we um. Were considering to put those in the administrative um budget.
Okay.
Given that she would be monitoring those events and having to um apply different staff. To deal with whatever may come up with that, because we may have to use some of the guys from. Public Works or, you know, some of the admin staff. So for those projects, we would actually put them in the. Um, the admin section. So in this case, maybe we could leave the admin um. Special events at the seventeen thousand as it is, given those projects.
Yeah, but those, I don't know that those would qualify as like special events versus. Those are things that we're doing in the city, and I don't know if there's a definition for what special events are, but as I see special events, they're they're sort of like. One-time. Of events. For people to come out to where both the farmer's market and the community garden would be programs that we're implementing. And facilitating over a period of time. But regardless of the classification, or regardless of where they. Go, they need to go in here because we did pass those by resolution, so. Those are things that are expected to happen in this next fiscal year.
That sounds good. Now, the next question I would ask is um. We need to have an idea what we should budget, what amount we should be considering for those projects. Um.
Right, so.
Set an amount as a place center just to see how it it um it works. And then to get a better picture next year as to how we approach it.
Right, so for the um community garden, the um primary expense would be the materials to make the plots. And I know that when we were initially um looking at it, Mr. Simpson had some rough estimates. Um, so we need to circle back on those and make those a little bit um finer, we can do that, but include those in there. And I believe the um, not I believe, I'm certain that the farmer's market resolution had um an amount in there. I believe it was twenty-five thousand um to for operating expense. And um just as an aside for that. One of the things that um I've been looking into is how we can get funding for that farmer's market. So that we don't have to use the city funds for it. And um one thing that has come up is that in order for us to receive money from the county, for example. Um, in special appropriations, the farmer's market would need to be set up as a five oh three C B. See, a five oh three C one, um, so that it can um. Receive those types of fundings. Um, so I know Ms. Habada uh reached out to. I legal to ask what that process would be, um, but I don't know. You know, what's entailed with that. I don't know if there are any costs associated with that. I don't know if there's anything that we need to do, if we need to pass another resolution to make it a five oh. One C, five oh three C one. Five oh one C three. To make it a five oh one C three, um, but I think if there are any costs associated with that. You know, we should, that should be part of the operating cost that was set aside. But um, yeah, it would it would be in the resolutions.
Right, so in that case, we may have to treat it as a special um special project. Under the special section of the budget. And we will um consider it not necessarily like an enterprise fund. Because we are all under one umbrella.
Yeah.
So, yes, like we'll have to look into that.
Yeah, and to that point, it's not just the expenditures, right? I was also requesting that the the line items for. The receipts should be there as well, because on the community garden, there's going to be the um membership fees for, you know, people who participate. And on the farmer's market, there's going to be the vendor fees, um, whatever we decide those amounts are going to be. I think from our discussion, we said that we didn't want to treat it like a. An enterprise, so we weren't going to try and charge um, you know, rates that would turn a profit, but. Um, there's it's still going to be some receipts there, so those need to be included as well.
Sounds good.
Mm-hmm, and I think, and I think it would be um just as a good practice for us to just. As we're creating the budget, make sure that we're going through all of the resolutions that have been passed as well. To make sure that all of that stuff is being um accounted for in the creation of the. Of the budget, so we don't, we don't miss anything, because if it's if it's been something that's passed, the expectation would be that we would actually execute on it.
Noted, noted, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman Farid. Councilwoman Gion.
Thank you, Council President. Um, the, Mr. Stewart, quick question. For general expense, ten thirty, ten seventy-eight forty. Where it says mailers, the five thousand eighty, is that in, is that inclusive of the mailers that is sent out? For the special events, or is that all non-special event-specific mailers?
It is, it is non-specific, which would include those that is sent out for special events as well.
Okay.
But only for the council section, so um we have mailers in the general operations as well. But this is mainly for council um expenses.
Got it. So if I. Perfect example, Christmas party, knowing that we had to put a whole bunch of stuff out to get the citizens to know about the event. That would be not under the Christmas party special events line, but it would be with the mailers general expense line.
Yes.
Five thousand eighty, okay, thank you.
And 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 um I think the mailers should be having general information going out, which would include those. So, yes, it would include that. Thank you.
You're welcome. If I, if I can, just because I was on the behind-the-scenes side of things, and I don't want to speak for. Council Vice President, but if we can possibly increase the Christmas party line item by. Nine hundred and fifty-six dollars to make it an even fifteen thou, it's fourteen thousand forty right now, I'm looking at ten thirty, ten eighty-six, forty-seven. Um, right now, it's ten oh four oh. If we can make it an even fifteen, I think that would be. Better, um. But I I would defer also to Council Vice President to see what her thoughts were, and I can speak to why I'm saying this, but. Um, I know that cost of food, a lot of things have gone up compared to prior to um to when um. Parties had stopped due to COVID, so just wanted to add that, but Council Vice President. If you're.
Yes, I would say, um, I I had it on my um, on my sheet to raise it to fifteen even. Um, consider what we spent. Uh, with the um. Decorations, the uh catering and um, and other things. Yeah. Increase it to fifteen.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I think it's funny to me to go back up to uh five thousand, I'm not sure why it went down by a thousand.
Yeah.
Awesome. Councilman Abada.
Hold on, let me just make sure, uh, Mr. Ms. Hannah, Councilman Hannah, when you finish?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Vice President Ferguson?
Um, this is to um either um Councilman Harrison and or Herring, um. Were the intentions on doing another um cancer. Event that was very successful.
Yeah, actually, yeah, we were, actually, I was looking at that.
Put it in there on.
Yeah. Uh.
Unless we can share with the the um Hill City. But I think.
One second, you're talking at the same time, so Ms. Ferguson, uh, yeah. Are you finished, Ms. Ferguson?
Yeah, I was just saying, I think uh we had a lot of um. Compliments about that, um, that I just would like to see it in there.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we gotta do, we do wanna um have it in there, we do wanna include that in there. So, um. I'm trying to figure out how much that.
Can I ask you a question, Councilman Harry? Uh, because I'm looking at the uh, the uh Glen Arden Day. Um, and I saw that increase of thirty-five to thirty-seven. Is that necessary, or can we, can we use that balance to pay for uh the um. The uh breast cancer event, oh?
Yeah, because we, I think we're going to stay under thirty-five. I don't, I don't know. Uh, yeah, yeah, you can do that, we can take that twenty hundred and put it toward the breast cancer.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Gion.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to put a marker on this, but. Um, because we haven't gotten to the other sections as yet, but of course, we've, well. We were given a direction to refuse the entire budget, that back to school appears more than once, right? So it's here on legislative, special events, the twelve hundred. Want to make sure that we keep that in mind when we see it in another area of the budget.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, so woman, uh, I would go to Councilwoman Farid, then I'll come back to you, Vice President Ferguson. Councilwoman Farid.
Sorry, um, so on the back-to-school event, that amount should actually be increased. What's there right now is reflective of. Just the donation. To another, if we are planning a whole thing of an event, then it's definitely going to be more than twelve hundred dollars. And um, yeah, so we, I I would say we should increase that to at least five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And I I don't, I don't know why it's so specific to say backpack giveaway. I think we could just call it back-to-school event.
Back-to-school event, you're kind of breaking up too, but I heard that.
Yeah, it said, it it's very, it it says backpack giveaway. I think it, we can just say back-to-school event.
Okay. And you said, and take it up to five K. Um. All right, uh, Mr. Stewart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. So I want to talk on two items. Um, first, the um. Glen Arden Day, this amount, um, actually, I raised it by, I think, seven percent, given inflation. And what we had spent last year, so that was the reason why it actually went up, and I believe that um. Thirty-seven would be reasonable, but if you want to move that over to the Hill City event. Which I believe includes the cancer event, um, I could do that as well.
So the Hill City event is actually the breast cancer event?
No.
Okay.
We just haven't had um had any, but that's um cater to um, even though breast cancer has something that is. Uh, healthy eating or yoga or different things like that, um.
Oh, okay.
Different activities, whether we decide to do a five-mile walk or whatever, we just have to come up with something um to do, um. Um. But that's more to health. Healthy eating and healthy lifestyle.
Can I, can I respond?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so um, given that, are we saying that we need a line item specific for the cancer um event?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Sounds good. And.
And that line item will be twenty-eight hundred dollars. Twenty-eight hundred dollars, did I say that right? Yep, twenty-eight hundred dollars. Um. I, we're just gonna have to trust whoever chairs the Glen Arden Day Committee to. Use their negotiation skills to keep that expense under thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, so the back-to-school, the other um item is a back-to-school. This one thousand dollar or twelve hundred dollars was definitely going towards just buying books. And um and backpacks and those items. It was not really an event. The event side of it was um sponsored by the mayor. Um, so you would see expenses um being incurred on the executive side. Um, but those have nothing to do with the actual purchasing of the school books, the bags. And the other peripherals that are needed. Um, it is to really. Um, control, or I wouldn't say control, it is to manage the event. Um, whether it's buying food for the attendance or, you know. And and I think the mayor could um explain further on that.
Uh, well. It seems to me that should all be one. It's confusing to try to put that in two different places, but um I saw. Councilwoman Gion's hand first, uh, and Councilwoman Farid, you can correct the wrong, that was, your hand never went down, so. Okay, thank you. All right, so Councilwoman Gion.
Thank you, Council President. I agree that there's, number one, I agree that it should be one line item for back-to-school. Period, similar to all the other events where there's just one line item. Um, and so so that's that. Secondly, um, and. Mr. Stewart, you probably, I'm trying not to say Dean, I apologize, Mr. Stewart, you probably wouldn't know um the history behind this, but. The council, and it was hosted by Councilwoman Farid and myself, brought forth the back-to-school event. Um, when, let me see, it was back in twenty twenty-one, and it, we didn't just give backpacks away, but. There was music, there was, you know, ice cream machines, there were different things that were done, so it was an event. So, just want to be, that's one of the reasons why I I I had said, let's circle back to this. Because I did see it elsewhere, but that was something that came from the legislative office. Um, and I just want to overly stress that. If that's possible.
Yes, thanks for that clarification, um, in the fact that that happened before, um. So we could really um change this amount and put it all into the legislative for the five thousand, as you. Recommended. Now, um, I leave that to you guys to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Um, Council, Vice President Ferguson?
I just was gonna say, uh, touch on with um Councilwoman Gion, to say, um, this type of event. I just was gonna say, uh, touch on with um, Councilwoman Gion, saying, uh, this type of event was brought to the city first by the uh, legislative department.
Okay. Thank you, all right, Mr. Stewart, uh, I have uh, extra line item for uh, breast cancer awareness event for our citizens for twenty-eight hundred, um. Is any opposition to increasing the Christmas line item to fifteen thousand? Here none? Uh, uh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones?
I have no opposition to that, but uh, my question was about the breast cancer uh, awareness event. Do we, Mr. Stewart, do we have any figures on what was spent last year for that, to make sure that the twenty-eight hundred is sufficient to cover the amount for that event?
Thanks for the question, Mr. Councilwoman Jones, yes, I will try to put that numbers together for you and send it off to the council tomorrow.
All right, sir, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you, Council President.
Mm-hmm. Uh, back to school to five thousand, Mr. Stewart, and I think that was, oh, and then the uh, what Councilwoman Farid had mentioned regarding the um, the items that relates to the farmers market and other things, someone resolutions send me to be um, appropriately reflected.
Yes, and also the um, the fifteen thousand for the Christmas party, just to round it off to fifteen thousand.
Correct.
Yes, got it.
Okay. All right. Well, having done that, if there are no more questions as it relates to the um, legislative budget, we'll move on to the executive budget. And Mr. Stewart, what page is that?
Sorry, that would be page fifteen.
What's in, oh, seven.
No.
And I'm asking.
Fourteen, fourteen.
Okay, I'm asking, cause it's completely different in my, in my notes.
Yes.
I have tabs, I don't have pages. All right, um, Mayor Cross, do you want to present your budget?
I thank you, Council President, and uh, the budget here for the Office of the Executive Branch um, oversees the ordinance of the cities that they are faithfully executed, but also supports in the appointment of the heads of offices and departments, this budget is set to conditional status uh, that affords the people of the city of Glen Arden to heal for um, mental health and wellness, but also an incorporation of diversity and inclusion, uh, which as we've seen, a tremendous growth in our uh, community, as well as our neighboring communities, to build uh, safety in our communities, uh, this budget is set to support those required needs, uh, we are looking at a budget total, if you'll scroll there to the bottom, for uh, twenty-four of fifty-five, I believe I'm saying that right, for total expenditures, uh, in this budget, each item is explained, um, you know, clearly, and uh, we do have, um, we did add miscellaneous office supplies, because traditionally, mayor's budget hasn't had money necessary for sending out flyers or postcards, traditionally, the mayors and all the offices utilize public works to help deliver flyers throughout the city, uh, which was more effective and actually more cost-effective and supported the full knowledge of our citizens, uh, now, uh, with the budget, we do need to put in some money for flyers to go out or to go out in mail, that is, so that the citizens uh, can be more easily informed uh, outside of the door-to-door and the all-tech way that we've had to do it over the last year.
Thank you. Have any questions, comments for the uh, from the council on the executive budget? Councilwoman Jones? You're, you're muted, Councilwoman Jones?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at uh, line item seventy-five ten, it shows uh, community advertisement promotion and outreach, promotional pins, pencils, t-shirts, and that, where did? How was that used last year in the last budget? They said they spent, um, I don't know how much they spent, but it's gone from two hundred and twenty-five dollars to um, and FY twenty-one, twenty-two, it went to a thousand, and now it's uh, the twenty-three budget, it was twelve hundred, now it's at thirty-six hundred dollars for pins, pencils, t-shirts, et cetera. Mayor Cross, how was that used? Where was it used in the city? What events? Or events, or was it at any events?
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones, so as stated earlier, December the fifth of twenty-twenty-two, the council did take the mayoral budget to zero, so there was no expenditures being used, um, uh, we didn't have time. The idea, though, is the office would hold a annual writing competition for our students and the high school graduation class of that year, which would afford them an opportunity to do scholarships, and with that, then we would have some swag that would come from the city of Glen Arden. The idea is to build morale in our city, uh, and this particular line item helps in, and I don't know if you all have ever seen the city of Frederick, Maryland, they have everything from commander-looking coins to t-shirts and things that the citizens of Frederick, Maryland actually do wear. Uh, when we did our Good Citizen, our Good Samaritan Awards, we could have handed them a t-shirt. These things are really nice to show our esprit de corps in the city, but it's for any of our special events, uh, if we wanna give out a special award, you know, a city award at each of these events for like the star uh, volunteer, because we need to really bring our citizens together. So these items is what that's for, uh, to get our citizens out, to putting their hands to the plow and building community unity, um, this is what that money would be for, but you know, last year, we did not use it because it was zeroed out by December the fifth, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Council President.
Any other questions? Comments? Uh, council, I, I saw, I saw Councilwoman Gion's hand first, and then Vice President, I'll come to you.
Sure, I'm sure, I'll let Council, um, Vice President ask the question, I just want to know if you could minimize the screen a little bit, so I can see, I can try to see the majority of the budget. Thank you.
I was wondering, um, what would be on these pens and pencils and t-shirts?
I'm sorry, say, say that again?
I heard it, thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson.
One second, Mayor Cross, Mayor Cross.
I'm sorry.
Can you say that again, please, cause I didn't hear the question?
My question was, what would be on the pens and pencils and the t-shirts?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Cross?
Yes, thank you, the city of Glen Arden, city on the move, so this is our esprit de corps as a corporate body, uh, so this would go for, from the city, uh, would be the city shield, uh, it would be the city's motto, you know, it would be us building our family as the city of Glen Arden.
Okay.
Roger.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilman Gion?
Sure, thank you, Council President, um, going to line seventy-one thirty, ten fifty, ten seventy-one thirty, professional services, I see it says fiscal year twenty-four preparation for election twenty-twenty-five, again, I think that kind of goes back to what was already stated in a prior section about the election within itself. Our, this cap, this um, budget is for July one of this year and ends June thirtieth of next year, the election would be the next budget, so I'm trying to see why we would need um, fiscal year twenty-four preparation for election twenty-twenty-five, and that's one and two, why is it in the executive section? Why wouldn't it be in the adminis, if, if, basically, what's the rationale behind this? It's a truthful question, why, why here, and what's the purpose of it?
Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Councilwoman Gion, uh, so the purpose was to support the board of election monies that was already in the budget elsewhere, and the only rationale for it being here is because I thought of it. But we can take that out considering today's uh, discussion and the fact that that particular budget is gone, uh, but we still need to have uh, GSA equipment uh, in the mayor's office and uh, cybersecurity assessment, uh, considering after COVID nineteen and many of the changes that have happened uh, for uh, the office, we, we do not actually have, uh, like the, the legislative branch has a, really a backup system for the documents that go by with and through the executive office, so that's something that we need to have as far as our planning and programs is concerned, but you'll see that thousand dollars really is miniscule compared to some of the other monies across the budget, uh, but that's what that's for.
Okay, thank you, so I would say, I don't know where we would land on the thousand, well, on that particular line item, but I do think that it should be decreased based on the inclusion of fiscal year twenty-four preparation for election twenty-twenty-five being one of the reasons why it, it came to a thousand dollars, so I don't know if this is at your best guesstimate, or if it's um, Mr. Stewart's guesstimate, but if we were to leave consult, if we were to leave GSA cybersecurity and remove the fiscal year twenty-four preparation for election twenty-twenty-five, what would that bottom-line number look like instead of a thousand dollars? That's just for my, my thinking, I can't speak for the entire council.
Cross or Mr. Stewart?
Uh, relatively speaking, I would say that would look like roughly about eight hundred, because really, that preparation is only like an announcements or uh, solicitation for board members, um, because it is on the mayor's office to actually uh, select the members for the board uh, of election, and then the council to confirm, so it really rests with the mayor's office per charter. But since we're not doing that in FY twenty-four, based on us moving the fiscal requirement for twenty-five up, um, we can take that out, I would say this looks a lot like eight hundred. Thank you.
Okay, and I just wanted to say, as far as finding, and again, I, I would probably uh, want to hear from more of the, from, from some of the council members who are here during an election period, so that predates me. Is there a cost associated with seeking an election, seeking election board members, isn't it, is it not similar to us trying to get members for other commission committees that we do, and I'm not sure if there's a cost associated with that, with seeking um, citizens to be part of the election board, I'm not sure if I'm missing anything.
Uh, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Council President, no, there is no cost associated with seeking uh, citizens to us uh, come and uh, serve on the election board or any other board that we have in the city of Glen Arden, but also, I wanna know, what is GSA cybersecurity, why we need to fund whatever, well, I need to know what it is first before I can determine whether it needs funding or not.
Cross? Mayor Cross and Mr. Stewart? Answer that question?
Sorry, but the mayor has to make a definition, thank you.
Cross?
Uh, thank you. So for that, we're looking at, for GSA, the equipment in the office of the mayor has not been updated, uh, so we would need to utilize our office supplier to try and get some updates in the office of the mayor, um, and that includes you know, like furniture and things that haven't been purchased in that office, like bookshelves. Uh, what's in there right now is, is really antiquated, uh, so that would be a little bit part of that, and using GSA is a lot cheaper, uh, when it comes down to um, cybersecurity, and those, those things are securing the net and securing our documents, um, if we need to get certificates or training, those are the types of things that we need to start looking at, uh, awareness trainings, if we wanna um, go out and get that kind of training, but for me, we, we don't, we are not investing in cybersecurity, and I know the Attorney General for the state of Maryland has that invested in their role to ensure everyone has uh, cybersecurity training, but I recall, I'm not sure where um, General uh, Anthony Brown is, but I know when General Frost was in, um, one of the key lymph facts was we didn't have anything uh, tied to it, or any programmings, or any training, or any um, IT awareness, community, anything. So I put that in there, it's kinda like um, us getting ready for uh, the awareness programs, if we need to go to conferences to see if our systems are up to par, then this is where I put that. Uh, we can also put that under Steel Beach, considering they control um, the web media services for us, I don't know if they put any of that in their training, but uh, mayor's just trying to think ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson?
Um, I would say, um, yeah, I was gonna comment on the um, there was no cost to the uh, election board selection, and just hearing various comebacks from the mayor, um, concerning this particular uh, line item, I would say, take it out, cause it doesn't make a bit of sense.
Yeah. Uh, Councilman Gion?
Sure, thank you, um, Council President, I'd like to also see if we can look at the special events line item. Um, please do not kill me for my request, but can you now make it a little bit bigger, just so I can see, I, I'm sorry, I am so sorry.
I'll say that I have increased it, decreased it.
I know, I know, I feel like the screen is indicative of the budget, I'm sorry, we're increasing and decreasing certain factors, so.
No worries.
I am looking at certain things here, and one in particular is the, looking at five K per year community outreach, five thousand words written assignment, I think that's a lot to give. Well, is this to one citizen, is this to? I'd like to hear about that, because I, 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 I know that there are mayor's offices that give money, I usually see five hundred dollars, you know, in a plaque, but five thousand dollars, that's more than some people's mortgages, probably the majority of the city citizens' mortgages, so I'm interested in hearing from the mayor about that, and also, so sorry, back to the this is a general, but, but while we were wrapping up the professional services line item, when we're coming up with the numbers, uh, we, like, you know, GSA and cybersecurity, and I know we decided to remove, to remove that, but when we're coming up with these final numbers, like a thousand dollars, is there supporting documentation that showcases how we got to the number? Or are we just throwing a number out there? Because it's easy to say, for example, that's why it was important for me to ask about the election board, fiscal year twenty-four preparation for election, and to hear that it's to acquire citizens to join the board, there's, I've come to find out, which I kind of thought, there's no expense to that, so how did we get to a thousand dollars, so that's, or, or how do we get to these numbers, correction, this is a question for the executive office and the treasurer, like, is there supporting documentation, or are there numbers being thrown out there? So that's one question before, before we get to answering my question about special events, I'd like to have that particular. my question about special events, I'd like to have that particular question answered first, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. Yes, there's supporting documentation for this. Looking at the Board of Elections preparations, the Board of Elections is called out by the Prince George's County. It's, in my opinion, different than, say, any other, other boards. If we do the financial board that you guys passed the resolution for, that's an inner city thing. When you talk about the Board of Elections, if we don't do it, that's our citizenship, that's our cityship on the line. Because it's a requirement, you know, for us being a city to hold these elections. So I see the Board of Elections a little different than, say, our youth advisory boards, than our advisory boards on finance, our advisory boards on, you know, maybe senior projects. Those are inner city boards, but the Board of Elections, we don't do that, we get in trouble with the state. So that's why I see it differently. So I put something there, but
I'm sorry, just pausing for one second and I apologize for interrupting you, but I don't want it to go down to another section. I don't think anyone on this call, I, I think I can speak for everyone on this call. I think that no one is saying that finding, you know, getting an election board up and running is not a priority and a necessity and a requirement. I think we all know that. The part that I'm speaking of is the expense attributed to doing that. And from those who have been part of the council for years, they've stated that there's no expense attributed to reaching out to citizens of Glen Arden to join the election board. So is there a particular expense that you were thinking of that we're all missing? Because we all know, we all know that it's a necessity and it's a requirement, but I'm talking about the expense associated with it.
Yes, so with that expense, I mean, and consider, we've got three buckets in here, so we're really talking about roughly three hundred bucks. And even less for that. That's why I said we can really take this line down to like eight hundred, maybe even seven hundred. But with this, the, we need to bring in and do community town halls. We need to bring in experts. If citizens want to understand if there are new voting laws that come out, we need to do things that hold like meetings or sessions for interested citizens. All of that, there's an event in the city of Glen Arden that doesn't have a meal attached to it or at least finger foods. So that stuff isn't free. Traditionally, we don't bring our citizens in for a town hall or some kind of corporate meeting and we don't have hospitality there. So really that two, three hundred is about hospitality and putting the paperwork against getting the people that are interested in serving out and getting their questions answered. One of the things that has always been troublesome with Boards of Elections is, you know, there isn't a lot of clarity as to what exactly am I getting into? You know, these are talk and information sessions. So when I say that Board of Elections, and, and I know we're putting a lot of energy in this, we've already killed it from the other piece in the, in the, in the, forgive me, in the budget. So, I mean, we really could just take this piece out, but I want to be a good steward and answer your questions relative to this. So that's kind of how I see this. This is hospitality in regards to that piece.
Okay, so it was under professional services, so I would have, I wouldn't have put it there. And I know you initially stated that it randomly came to your mind, so that's why you put it there. And hence why I'm still trying to figure out. So this is not about the election board per se at this point, it's more about when we got to the thousand dollars or whatever this, whatever these amounts are, is there documentation? Like how much is GSA? How much is cybersecurity? How much was election? Like what documentation was provided for preparation for election twenty twenty five that got us to this thousand dollars number? That's, that's more so what I'm speaking to is where are we coming with these numbers? So we can, we can circle back on that because I do want to hear from either you and the treasurer on that question. Not necessarily that line item, but just that question. But for special events, I did speak specifically about the five thousand dollars per year for community outreach. Is that for one citizen? Multiple citizens, I'm not sure, but I also see the August back to school extravaganza in there with STEM program, fifteen hundred dollars. That's also something that we just discussed that is being covered specifically to August back to school extravaganza that's being covered somewhere else in the budget. So that fifteen hundred dollars needs to change. So those are my questions.
Oh, super. Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. I, I appreciate the inquiry about the back to school event. Now, just for the record, August the fifth, ten to two has already been secured for Glen Arden Community Center for the back to school backpack K through twelve. But here's the difference from what the legislative body hosted a couple of years ago and what the executive branch has been hosting. The executive branch incorporates the eighteen to twenty four year olds in our community. These are the eighteen to twenty four year olds who have maybe decided college isn't for them. What we are doing is we're addressing the issue of joblessness and we are addressing the mentorship issue. So it's a little bit more than just giving out backpacks is what I do. So backpacks is a piece of it. And last year, the fifty thousand dollars, I guess, what the council had literally only bought backpacks. It did not buy any food. I know that's what the treasurer stated, but that was not exactly correct. It literally only bought backpacks. And, and to that regard, it only bought just about a hundred and fifteen backpacks. And thank goodness, we had some support throughout the community from different delegates and state's attorney's office. Folks, we intended to only do a hundred, we ended up doing four hundred backpacks. So council, that five thousand going to you relative to the, you know, backpack drive that you did at Seventh Street Park, it didn't hold four hundred. What we need is not only just catering to our K through twelve, but this event that will be held August the fifth from ten to two at Glen Arden Community Center caters to our children that are off to college as well as our children who are looking for jobs. Unions will come out and offer them five-year apprenticeships, which they can convert into entrepreneurship opportunities and they will be mentored beyond this one event. So I, I just don't do events. We do life skill changing opportunities and that's the difference.
So to respond to that specifically, we I saw Councilwoman Fareed raise her hand, so let me, I'm, I'm going to let her respond as well. But specifically, since I asked the questions, Councilwoman Fareed and I led the efforts on behalf of the council to basically do a back to school event. It was the very first one and that was it. We, we were prepared to do a second one. It was in our budget. And for things that happened behind the scenes, the executive office took over and did a back to school event. I don't think it's fair to state that we, meaning Councilwoman Fareed, myself and the council, only did something that was so small, was smaller in nature when the executive office did not know what we would be doing the following year. So I just want to provide clarity for that. When we realized that the executive office had already jumped and started to do things without collaborating with the council, in turn, we decided to give you what was in the budget for us to do the event. Councilwoman Fareed had mentioned earlier, one of the reasons why we increased our budget line item was because the very first time we did it, we relied heavily on donations. This year, we're doing it differently. So I just want to make sure that it's not a, you guys were doing something small, you guys were doing this and giving solely backpacks for a hundred and fifteen while I am doing something more grandiose. Just want to make sure citizens are going to be of benefit. Citizens, citizens are going to benefit from the back to school events, so we're fine. I'm sorry, I'm fine with citizens getting the best of what we can offer, but I just want to make sure that there's some clarity there. I also heard you mention about K through twelve, the, the date has been secured for K through twelve. And I think, again, that goes back to the communication that is being done that is not being communicated to us. It's being communicated with external folks, but not internal folks, knowing that the legislative body is the one that was focusing on the back to school events. I just want to say that. And while there's different aspects of what you're speaking of for eighteen to twenty four, that's probably a different program, but I just want to put that out there. And Council President, I am not you, although I asked the mayor questions, I do see that Councilwoman Fareed raised her hand. I don't know if it pertains to the back to school event, but I would like to know if she has something to say about that if I can, Council President.
Yes. Uh, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, um, thank you, Councilwoman Gill, for touching on all those points. And I think this just highlights to me why it is important for us to just have a centralized special events budget. We are not competing against one another within the city of Glen Arden. We are here to produce events and provide resources to the city as, in a collaborative fashion as much as possible. And I think the fact that we have events that are designated as legislative or administrative or executive creates silos that are unnecessary and are really not leaning towards giving the biggest benefit to the citizens. If we can focus our efforts on creating a collaborative event in which we all have networks that we can bring together to provide the resources to the citizens, I think that would be the best approach. As Councilwoman Gill stated, when we did this event in August of twenty twenty one, we had just been elected in mid-June or just sworn in in mid-June. So there wasn't a tremendous amount of time to plan. We were heavily reliant on donations and thank you so much to the citizens that donated as well as the organizations that donated. If we continue to tap into those networks and use our sponsors to provide us with enough of the things, I think we can pull this event off without increasing the budget and have that money set aside for the things that we as a city are going to sponsor specifically. But the event can be as big as our networks can allow for in terms of sponsorship. And again, I'm just going to reiterate that I don't believe the citizens care who is hosting the event. And if we're going to spend our time focusing on whose office it came out of, we're going to be wasting time that could be better diverted towards bringing the best resources to the citizens. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones, then Councilman Vice President Ferguson?
Well, I kind of agree with my council members, what's been said so far, but I'm looking at this whole special event budget for the executive office and I'm looking at some of these, these events. I'll just jump right down to the Easter extravaganza. The Easter extravaganza this year, the Easter egg thing that was done, was done with Councilwoman Fareed. She organized that with Zion Church for the city of Glen Arden. But the Easter egg, if this is the same extravaganza that the mayor is affiliated with, Mayor Cross, were you at that event?
I organized that event with the Brothers of Omega Psi Phi and that event actually heralded about two hundred and fifty attendees. And the beauty of that event is, again, it was like Glen Arden Community Center.
One second, one second. Mayor Cross, can you finish, please?
Did you ask me a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, both you guys were talking at the same time and I just, I just interrupted point of order so that we could hear each of you. And I want you to finish your point so then Ms. Jones could, you know, state her point. But if you were finished, then that's fine.
Oh, thank you, Council President. So we put the Easter extravagan- remember, by December the fifth, twenty twenty two, the city council had taken all of the mayor's budget. So the Easter extravaganza was actually pulled out of the mayor's pocket as well as the Brothers of Omega Psi Phi supporting. So I really, you know, we put it on as a free event for the citizens of the city of Glen Arden as well. So we needed to at least put a test bed out there to show that this is something that we needed to do. You know, that event was under calendar back in February, so we already knew that this was going to be planned. And when it happened, it was a tremendous show. Like I said, we had over two hundred and fifty attendees. So again, this year, what I am hoping, I mean, twenty six thousand for the entire year for the executive branch. I mean, we've got one event in the legislative branch that's thirty five thousand alone. You know, so the, the executive branch does a lot of support partnering across this district, across this county with various nonprofits that seek to support the well-being of people. So I don't ask for a lot because we do have some very good community supporters that come to the event and showcase their love on our citizens. So again, my entire ask for the year is twenty six thousand. I think that is very generous considering all of the events that the executive office puts on relative to other places in the budget. Thank you, sir.
My question was, did you attend this event? Were you in attendance at this event?
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. I don't see the relevance. The city didn't pay for it regardless.
Okay, so let's look at the farmer's market. What are you planning on? You said there's in this special event you have on here, Unity Programs Parade Farmer's Market. What, what is that?
Oh, thank you, Councilwoman Jones. So for the farmer's market, you know, it's been the mayor's push to bring over five thousand pounds of food to the city already by with and through other, like I said, partners, nonprofits that seek to end hunger, which we have attributed to the evolution, if you will, of disenfranchisement and crime. So supporting getting that here is the rental of vehicles to support the picking up of food and supporting in the distribution bags and different things that showcase a pride in the service that is being provided. Again, over the last year, it was just amazing to see the response that's needed in this food arena. And I know we now have legislation for the farmer's market, but until that comes to fruition, again, we have to continue to support various entities, like we've supported Just Savannah Woods for their big return to school party. We've supported at various events like the Harvest Day Rewind and the Polar Express. And also when we did our program for our seniors, we, we give out food all the time at every event, even at this August the fifth, you know, back to school transitional youth extravaganza. But that stuff doesn't come here free. You know, you have to get a Penske truck or a U-Haul to pick it up. So that is part of the cost.
I never knew Shabak Ministries asked for any monies to bring food when they donated food. So that's a little different for me. But in, I'll just speak in the past, the only thing that the executive office was responsible for was the Harvest Day Rewind, Martin Luther King program and a couple of other programs. All these other programs that you, you know, have in here, events, I'll say, not programs, events that you've designated for the, I, I just don't see Polar Express, yeah. I just, I just don't, I just don't see, see them being done. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Vice President Ferguson?
Uh, yes, as far as the Easter event. Um, Mayor, you said that it was partnering with someone else and that it wasn't a Glen Arden event, yet you put it in our newsletter and advertised it. The other thing is that citizens have complained about duplicate events. The other thing is that citizens um, have complained about duplicate um, events um, in the city paying for them, um, whether it's a thousand and legislation, a thousand administration or the um, or the um, executive. My um, problem is um, that I have with some of your partnering, uh, most of the time you are there, but you was not there for the Easter event, cause I went over to support it and you were not there. Um, and I stayed there a, a, a while. And so um, I am totally against the dup- duplicating um, of events. Um, and most of the events that you have that you partner with, uh, other people, you do advertise it in our um, the newsletters. And so I am um, definitely understanding this farmer's market and, and all of this, um, these extra little things that you're putting in. I concur with um, Councilwoman Jones that um, there were minimum amount of events in the mayor's um, um, a budget. And the fact of um, what is in the legislative department doesn't have anything to do with then your event. You constantly say that, that there's this and that, but you need to understand that a lot of these things, um, you know, when you asked about it, you say you're partnering with people. And you had mentioned something about, um, you have a lot of partners and a lot of organizations and different things like that that you deal with and that they help people and uh, make sure I wrote it down, you know, people. Yeah, and that, and a lot of times when we come there, they're very seldom, um, the citizens involved in your activities are minimum. And we get a lot of asking questions after the event, you know, how, how come it wasn't advertised or we didn't know about it? So um, a lot of these things, I would suggest that they need to come out. Um, you said the, the Polar Express uh, is fine, the um, Harvest Rewind is fine. I think you took over the dis- distribution of turkeys. Um, I have no problem with that, but some of these other things, um, even the, I would say the um, autism awareness, um, I know you said you partnered with somebody with that, um, but a lot of these extra things, I think they need to come out, or at least be monitored.
I'm done.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Councilwoman Fareed.
I'm gonna take my hand down. I'll raise it again later.
Okay. All right, so I do have a, oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilman Harris.
Oh, okay, yeah, I did want to just chime in here right quick. Um, like I said, uh, that um, that is thousand dollars GSA cybersecurity. I mean, the reason why I think it shouldn't be in there, because that should be uh, organizational wide event. That should be, I mean, it's uh, item that should be really in administration, because you know, the whole building need to be um, the cybersecurity or the whole building is at stake, because we have had a, a ransom, I mean, a ransomware scare one time before. So I'm not sure why it's under the mayor's budget. And also, we, the council and the mayor's budgets never have anything to do with the elections, because we gotta look, we gotta take a hands-off approach to make sure that there's no question about the election and the um, fairness of the election and, 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 you know, if we have uh, money in our budget, you know, you're talking about serving sandwiches into people and talking about the election and everything. I mean, that could be almost labeled as a political campaign, you know? So we don't, you don't, we don't do, we don't touch the election. The election board gets their money and they do what they want to. We don't get involved in it. We don't sponsor events for it. We do that, we do that as, as, as candidates when we have meet and greets. Um, but as for the um, as for the um, events, this is why I think we do need to have events separated from in, in specific budgets, because we need to be able to do what events we want to do without worrying about if all the money's been expended already. You put this all in one bucket, I can see it, it go, it see it all going out the door real quick. Now, I, I think the biggest problem I have, Mayor, actually, is, is, is that it's a level of respect when it comes down to your events, because you knew last year that the uh, council head was doing a backpack event. Instead of saying, hey, can I partner with you, you try to go do an event and try to, I guess, outdo the council, I guess it was. You know, you say you're doing things for people eighteen and twenty-four, then that's not a back-to-school event. That's a, 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 more of a, a career, career uh, fair or something. You know, where you're trying to get people trained up to do whatever, career business fair. So you call it a backpack event, but yet you, you, you hopped on the fact that you gave away six hundred backpacks. And I know you got his backpacks to where the kids, because I was actually over there for a bit. Um, but it just comes down to a level of respect, because I'm looking at your thing now and you know, we're getting ready to do a cancer awareness event. You don't know what we're gonna do, but yet you have in your pro, in your, in your program, uh, five K Walk for Cancer. Okay, see, now I think that's just disrespect to me and to Councilman Harrison, who, who, who planned the last one that was gonna plan this. Instead of you coming on board and saying, hey, what, what can I do to help? Or, you know, can we partner, you know, or bring an idea to us, because you know we're gonna do it, you wanna go do your own thing. And that's where the problem comes in that for me, is that and, and is that you, you do these things in spite of, you know, um, us doing, doing like events too. You try to have your own little events, whatever we come up with, you, you, you put it in your little, you know, your event thing. You go, you go out here and you get these volunteers or get whoever you get to help you out with them, you know? And the thing about it is also with me is that a lot of citizens don't know about your events. They keep on asking me about them and I'm like, I don't know nothing about them until they happen. You know, I mean, it's just like the autism awareness, a lot of people want to do, a lot of people in Glen Arden wanted their ten-hour event. I was at that event and there were not a lot of Glen Arden people there. I don't think, I don't think I could have counted maybe three or four. You know, but they came to me afterwards, oh, you brought, you know, oh, people came, you had autism, uh, my grandson has autism, my kid has autism. I wish I could have came, I wish I would have known about it, you know, so. I'm gonna tell you one thing with the, with the council, what we do is we reach the community. We reach to the community of Glen Arden, the citizens in, in, in this community. We put out postcards, we, we make sure we get the word out, we make sure that we get them, that they know, you know? And if they don't show, they can't say they didn't know, because we tell them and we get the word out to them. And a lot of times they do show and they do support. But uh, again, with your events, this is twenty-six thousand dollars for, honestly, to, to me, it looks like twenty-six thousand dollars, because you said this a number of times when you were speaking, your outreach is not only Glen Arden, but outside the community. And I have a problem with that, because this is Glen Arden's money. It should be, the outreach should be inside the city, not outside. I'm not worried about people outside the community are doing, because they got their own budgets, they got their own financial streams. They got the county, if they're under the county, they got more money than we have. So I'm just saying that I just think that this level of respect that needs to be given when it comes down to these events, because again, I'm not gonna sit quiet, you know, when you try to overstep me on an event that I'm doing, you're gonna try to do the exact same thing. And that's just, that's, that's just not me, you know? Because I think it's disrespectful. You know, we put a lot of work into these events and I'd like to say, uh, Councilwoman Fareed and, and Guillaume and, and other ladies sponsored that um, event. For the backpack, they put a lot of work into that event. And I was out there and a lot of people um, donated backpacks. As a matter of fact, they did such a good job, people were asking me, are they doing it again, because I want to donate backpacks? So they didn't even have a chance to build that whole network before you went, ran in there and grabbed it and ran over, ran over across the street to um, the community center and had your own little backpack event, you know? Which I thought was really not respectful at all, considering we had it in our budget. So again, this is why I'm, I'm, this is a prime example of why you need to keep these events separate and fund the ones and fund exactly what's in this budget, because if you put it in here, in this budget, exactly what we're gonna fund, then that's what needs to be had. That way you don't have no crosshopes. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fareed, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I remembered my, my question, it was actually um, to Mr. Stewart about when we're itemizing these um, line items, right? We're going through and we're seeing special events and we're listing out all these events and we're listing event amounts next to them. Is the expectation that the amount that is allocated to that particular event is the max? Or could you say, okay, I don't have enough um, for this event, so I'm gonna move money from one event to, to the other? Um, and if so, is there a process for doing that? Or could theoretically, if, if we passed and said, okay, here's twenty-six thousand dollars for special events, all of that money be used for one event?
Uh, thanks for that question, um, Councilwoman Fareed. Um, yes, if it's for, let's say in this case, the twenty-six thousand eight hundred, it is for different um, events. However, if an event after the review, we find that may cost a little more, you could take from another, but you're leaving that other um, event short. And that event may not happen if you take too much from it. So it's, it's very restrictive, but it's open in case. And um, we did that last year with some of the programs in, uh, some of the events in many of the departments. Um, but as I said last year, I, these are special events. I mean, we must take time to um, plan these events and ensure that we stick within those budget. The only one that I find that is really planned and brought through to fruition is the Glen Arden Day. I really respect how that is done. And I wish the other events were done in that fashion as well.
Excuse you, uh, Ms. uh, can I, can I just ask a clarify question? I'll give it back to you, Councilwoman Fareed. All right, just so I can understand. So uh, based on Councilwoman Fareed's question, you know, the, the August backpack to school is set up, let's say for fifteen hundred dollars. Well, I can overspend and spend ten thousand dollars, right? And that would just mean that I'll have sixteen thousand eight hundred left to spend on the rest of the things that's listed in the special events, correct?
And that is gonna cause a problem, yes. Because the line, because the line, the line, I'm sorry about that, because the line item is special events and it's looking at special events as a whole. Um, but within that, if, if it is properly planned, as I said, as special event, we would know how to project these costs.
I understand.
If you go over by fifty percent, or that would be okay.
Ms. Stewart, I understand. I'm just saying that if I went over, I can go over to twenty-six thousand eight hundred and then it'll just be over on that one event. That is what I'm saying. Now, it might not be the best practice, but the point is that I can.
Yes, and then that would be it, no more, no more events for that.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Fareed. I just want to clarify on that piece.
Thank you, thank you. And just a follow-up on that. Is it also the case that I could go in between lines, like in the legislative budget? If, if we were over on, if we had already spent the special events budget, but I wanted to do another event, could I take money from our MML conference and, and do that?
It is within the department, so yes, that could happen, but it has to be um, approved by the the president, the vice president, and the city manager has to approve on that.
Okay, so within the department, moving money from one line to another line needs to be approved. Um, but within a particular line, the itemization of that line, you don't need to have approval to kind of move events around.
No.
Okay.
Another clarifying point on that question, where is it written that it has to be approved by the vice president, the president, and the city manager?
Because this, oh, I don't have it written, but the, the legislative is the responsibility of the, the um, the president and vice president.
Okay, so if um, Public Works wants us to go between line items, they can go between line items, but it would, it would not require an approval from me and the vice president, correct?
No, it would not. It would only require the um, the city manager.
And for the executive budget, who would it require?
It would require the city manager.
To move from one line item to another?
Yes.
And is that written down somewhere? Is that part of policy and procedures as far as the?
So the only thing that um, the city manager cannot do with switching from um, line to line is that she could not move from one department to the next, which is called a um, that would be called a misappropriation.
Yeah, I under- I understand that piece.
Within the department, the city manager would have that um, that uh, ability to.
Could you send me that policy, please? Because I've never seen that.
Yes, I will, I will send that to you.
And, and, and that's an established policy that's signed off on?
It is within the charter, I think.
Yeah, you gotta know, I don't think.
Yes, I think it's within, uh, it's within the charter. I will send it to you tomorrow.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Fareed.
No, that's what I was going to ask if there, if it was a documented policy. That was my understanding as well, that it was, um, I thought, I saw it in the charter, but I just, I think that that's an important piece to raise, because if it's not in the charter or it's not a documented policy, I think it should be, because we're spending time going through each of these line items and designating the amount that is supposed to be for that line item. If there is then the ability to go behind that and basically use the money any way you want and not for what it was designated for, then I'm not really sure we, like, why we're spending this time going through the level of detail that we're going through. I think it's necessary to go through this level of detail. I'm just saying that that level of detail needs to be maintained in the execution as well, not just in the approval of it. That would be my um, hope and expectation from a controls perspective.
Okay, about to wrap up on the executive budget, Mayor Cross.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say for the record, uh, this is the exact same list of special events at the uh, Easter program uh, for my twenty-twenty-two into twenty-twenty-three, which was cut by the city council. So there isn't any competition. I just don't want that to go down for record. Uh, what the mayor has always done has been at every council event, while I would say not all council members have come to the executive branch. Uh, you know, we are partners in this game, uh, but we spend an assing out amount of time attacking the mayor. Uh, but this here is not a competition. This is about healing the hearts and minds of our citizens from COVID-nineteen. And this is also about bringing diversity and inclusion into our community. It's never a competition and citizens love uh, every event that's happened. So um, I don't get the complaints that you're getting, but please uh, send them to uh, you know, three oh one seven seven three twenty-one hundred, come straight to the mayor if you got anything, uh, because you don't, I don't want anybody to take away from this that I'm competing with anybody. I want our citizens to have the city that they deserve, the city on the move, the family-oriented city that we sought out to build, Unity in Glen Arden. So no, I don't compete with anyone. The programs that we put on, again, aren't necessarily just events. That's why I call them life-changing opportunities, because they go beyond. Um, I just want to also address the city of Glen Arden residents versus others. You know, when there is no money offered from the city, partners can bring in who they want. Now, managing, you know, our Glen Arden Day, there were other cities from other districts there. I would expect that other cities from other districts would be there. So we're putting thirty-seven thousand dollars against that one event. So, you know, I just want to acknowledge that, I mean, we spend a lot of time in the executive branch budget on personal attacks versus the budget. But I thank you again for the time to speak, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Yes, sir. One thing, I, I, just to clear up some few things, okay? Um, yeah, it's, it's on a charter that is written to whether the city manager can approve within the budget is actually eight oh eight D. Um, yes. It says, um, you know, I was gonna pull it up. Um, it says transfer of appropriations at any time during the fiscal year, the city manager may transfer part or any unencumbered appropriation balance within an expenditure classification, so that's within the department. So um, that can be done, but I just want to say um, also that um, um, second, uh, maybe losing my train of thought. Um, uh, Shatsi Nana, this didn't, yeah, so I went blank on this one. Um, yeah, I had to come back to it, because I, I can't remember what I was, what I was gonna say, but I did want to clear it out. Oh, I know what I wanted to say, now I want, okay, let me just say this, because and people, you need, you need to know, because we do our budget and people wonder why we do our budget like this, because we do our budget with so much detail, when you pass this budget by law, you gotta follow exactly what's in the detail. That's why a lot of people pass budgets, say, you know, supplies and just leave it at that. But once you put on this budget, you know, uh, STEM program, fifteen hundred dollars, she cannot spend no more than fifteen hundred dollars on that program. So have you had this listed? Once it's voted into law, that's the law, that's what it is, your detail. They always say that we make our budgets too detailed, because then you lock people into that, um, that, those numbers. But once it's passed by ordinance, those numbers are fixed, but whatever. But whatever they say for that events, that she cannot go over that unless she get, um, approval from the city manager to move some of this stuff around. You know, but once it's locked in, it's locked in. That's no different if she had put these, made a lot, each one of these, listed them in order. That's how much she would have to, um, that's all she can spend on each event. You can't just spend twenty six thousand dollars on one event and then have nothing left. You have to spend what, um, what is listed in this budget, because that's where the budget is written, with that level of detail. So like you see, I mean, what they started doing is like, if you look at pens, pencils, promotional pens, pencils, T-shirts, et cetera, okay, that's open. She can spend it on that and whatever else you think is a promotional item. But these other ones, in this events, where she has these exact numbers of what she's gonna spend, that's all she can spend, no more.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Harris. So I I have, um, a couple of things that I've written down after listening to everything. And I'll just go from the top. Yes, I, I, I agree with, uh, council members that the cybersecurity thing is something that we should look at as an organizational, um, outlook, uh, and not just for the executive budget. So, uh, if there's a plan, uh, city manager Habada to look at cybersecurity, uh, for the, the city, I'm with that, but I'm not quite certain that, you know, um, from what I've heard that, you know, should be in the budget. Uh, the, um, promotional pins, et cetera, that's an increase to twenty four hundred dollars. I, I didn't really hear a rationale to increase it to, uh, that amount. So, um, it would be my recommendation that it stays at twelve hundred dollars, unless there's some type of, um, uh, plan behind that, that increases it to twenty four hundred dollars. And so I was going through, uh, Mr. Herring, what you, is this relates to what you just said? So I was going through each and every item on a special events list. And actually, if you add the total up to what's in there, it adds up to thirty two thousand eight hundred dollars. It doesn't add up to twenty six thousand eight hundred dollars. So five thousand dollars is, is, uh, between six thousand dollars is, is missing from that. Uh, but I do think that there are duplications in there, like November, oh gift thanks. I think we went to, my children, uh, went to both of them and it's the same candy. It's the same, you know, Halloween candy that you go on one day and go back the next day and get the same thing. So I do think that there are ways to consolidate. I think that whether we want to admit it or not, that if there are two events of the same thing, then is obviously a competition, so that we don't need to do all those things. So if, if the police department is doing something for, um, uh, ball festival, whatever, well, let's just consolidate all of it there. Um, uh, the same with, um, a lot of the other stuff here. Now, I will say, and, you know, I, this is not, um, this is not an attack on anyone, uh, but it's been increasingly difficult to get supporting documentation out of the executive office when it comes to these events. Whether it be documenting who things are going to, um, um, you know, receipts or, or what have you. Uh, and I'm not comfortable, um, with out of the twenty six thousand eight hundred being here or the thirty two thousand eight hundred there. I think there was a rationale last year, which is why zero last year, that we house it in, um, administration, given the fact that our staff members do so much of the work to get it done. Uh, and, um, Ms. Sabata is there to oversee some of the things there. So it just makes much more sense, at least that was a rationale last year, to house the event budget there. Now, this is not an attack, because it doesn't matter where it's housed. We could still have the event, whether it be the executive budget or the administrative budget. But I can count on the administrative staff who is there working full time to be able to produce all the supporting documentation that we need to push through the expenses on the, uh, treasurer's side, and so that we get payments out to the vendors in a timely fashion. Uh, so with that, it'll be my recommendation that we move the events, uh, to the administrative department so that we can get everything that we need in, in, uh, terms of support. Uh, uh, in terms of receipt, uh, so that the transaction can flow pretty seamlessly through, um, the city of Glen Arden. Um, with that being said, even still moving it to the administrative department, I think there's some things that I will just point out, uh, the Easter Stravaganza, the, the Backpack Day and the Oh Give Thanks Day, uh, that can be consolidated elsewhere. So the backpack being consolidated in the legislative budget, and I would hope that even with it being in the legislative budget, that the mayor, uh, will still be able to participate and bring awareness to that event. Uh, the, um, Oh Give Thanks being consolidated in the police department budget to combine those two activities. Uh, again, um, yeah, one event, we can all support it. Uh, and I forgot what the third one was. Autism Awareness was another one, uh, but that would be my recommendation. Councilwoman Jones.
Okay, so you got the Harvest Day Rewind and the Trunk or Treat are one and the same. So tho- those, that would, I would take that one out and give that to the police department as trunk or treat. Oh, give thanks. And then what is the November Giving Tuesday? What, what is that? We, this, I don't know, know the city. Like I said, the ma- the executive office always had the, uh, Martin Luther King Program. And, um, well, they did to do the, like I said, well, they call it Harvest Day Rewind now, but like you said, you're doing Harvest Day Rewind and Trunk or Treat are basically the same thing. The Oh Give Thanks, uh, would be the Turkey giveaway, but the Giving Tuesday, that's, I don't know what that is. But the other thing is too, you don't, even when we, if, if we decide to move all of this to the administrative, so they can take care of it, we still don't want to overtax the administration and being able to get, do these functions. We don't want to, um, burn them out. You know, doing event behind event and behind, because it takes time, it takes preparation. Like I said, uh, everything to me takes detail and attention. If you don't give the proper detail and attention to certain things, it's gonna fall, it's gonna fall apart, or it's gonna be raggedy. Okay, so, uh, the, with this thing now, her mothers, I guess maybe these three are connected together. Cinco de Mayo International Culture Day and Mother's Day, thirty five hundred dollars. And then June Father's Day, tho- those are the, and we've never had a scholarship program, so I don't understand, you know, what that's all about. But I mean, I'm not saying that we can't, you know, try new things, but I, I, I would want a, a detailed, uh, uh, instruction as to what it is you're doing here and why it would require, uh, five thousand dollars. What is the criteria for getting this scholarship, uh, uh, getting the scholarships? Community outreach, what are the, five thousand per year for community outreach? And then it's got in there parentheses, five thousand written word assignment. I mean, what is, what does that mean? I mean, I, I need criteria for what it is that you're trying to do, and then we can determine or not. We, well, we too, because we have the information to tell us what we're spending money, what, what exactly you need these funds for.
Okay.
It's like when Mr. Had, Councilman Herring presents his budget for, oh, stop it. His budget for, um, I'm sorry, his budget for the Glen Arden Day, it's detailed. It has what he's, the receipts, he has what he spent the money on and where the money went, and we have that knowledge. So then we can go back and say, okay, this year, uh, the, the, uh, Glen Arden Day spent twenty five hundred dollars and we got receipts for twenty five hundred dollars. So it's a match for a match, so what it is we're spending money on. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gill.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to respond to one of the points or one of the questions that, um, Councilwoman Jones asked specifically about Giving Tuesday. Giving Tuesday specifically in a nonprofit world is a, is a day that's, that is, that, uh, that's dedicated to fundraising. And you try to get as much money as you can. Tip, oftentimes, the majority of folks do it online. Um, but I don't know if the mayor had any ideas that's attributed to Giving Tuesday, but I know that's a day where people actually would donate to the city as opposed to us giving out to others, um, or donate to nonprofits and things of that nature. So again, not sure what the mayor had in mind, but I just know that's what Giving Tuesday is.
Okay. All right, so we just need a consensus on this. Um, and I'll just go through the line items, sorry. I'm sorry. Council, Vice President Ferguson.
Okay, one thing, um, I would like to know, um, especially since, um, Councilwoman Gill explained Giving Tuesday. Um, if that is something that is donated, um, or funds to the city, then is that recorded? I mean, money's just coming in and where is it given to, if that's the case? Yeah, so.
On, yeah, unless, I'm sorry, Council Vice President, Council President as well. Unless the mayor's saying that the city would be, that she, meaning the executive office, would be giving money, would be giving seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, you know, you typically Giving Tuesday is, you know, what I said.
Yeah, so I would like to ask our mayor, of course, to just explain just that particular, um, uh, for me, um, Giving Tuesday, what is that, um, as it pertains to your event?
Oh, super. Thank you. Uh, we've actually had a couple of questions here, and I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge that. You know, last year, this is kind of what happened with the executive branch.
I asked specifically, could you answer just that one question? If, if you get the floor to do it, um, another time, but I just need to know that. The answer to that, 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 that question. What in your, uh, what is, um, Giving Tuesday for you as it pertains to the city of Glen Arden? What happens?
So let's just say what happened in twenty twenty two, we went out to Glen Arden Hills and we supported one hundred families uh, in the Glen Arden Hills. In fact, the entire Hills, uh, walked away with groceries and different things. Um, when it comes down to this last year Giving Tuesday, uh, we supported all of our veterans. So Giving Tuesday in the executive branch is us continuing the heart and service of giving back to our community. Uh, so I just want to acknowledge that it's not like a money thing. It's a people thing and morale and welfare of our, our sources. Each year, uh, a particular piece of our community is supported. Uh, and that's just how it has happened over the last two years. And each year, you know, we turn in our receipts and budgets. I don't want it to be.
Mayor Cross, one second, please. One second, because I don't want to, uh, Vice President Ferguson has her questions that she wants to ask, I want to be able to get through them. And want to be able to get eventually through this portion of the budget.
So you're saying that, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars, you give away seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of food?
It can be food, it can be supplies. Uh, we look at our, uh, communities, particularly our communities that may be at risk. We can support. So it's about support. Um, so Giving Tuesday traditionally, um, in the sense of Americanism, is not what it means in the executive branch in the city of Glen Arden. It's about supporting the people.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Uh, and, and Ms. Fareed, we go to you before we make decisions on the budget. Councilwoman Fareed.
Thank you. I have a question about, um, just a follow on for, uh, Giving Tuesday in terms of, are there any, um, is there any criteria, prequalifiers for identifying those who would be supported on the Giving Tuesday? Um, is that information available or is it, is it published before the giving is done? Um, and once that giving is done, is it documented? Um, whom they were distributed to? I, I'm, you know, I'm just thinking about when we did the food giveaway with, uh, excuse me, with Zion Church, we, um, you know, received the meals at, at, excuse me, minimal cost, a- actually the cost of the supplies and that was documented. And then we also had the list of people who were targeted. It was, uh, Judge Savannah Woods, um, Glen Arden Housing Authority and Glen Arden Hills, um, this, the senior living, um, so I just want to, I, I don't know if that's a policy for us to be doing, but as we're talking about having some money in the budget specifically to give, and it sounds like it's going to individuals, it seems like it would be a prudent thing to do, to have some sort of qualifications for how organizations are selected or communities are selected. And then, um, some sort of record keeping around who those were given to. And I, I would say the same thing for any of the other events that the city is hosting in which, um, items are given out. I know that there have been like TVs given out, um, and just other items that are of more than a nominal value. And, um, it just would seem prudent that we would need to be documenting that type of thing, the, the receipt of those goods as well as the distribution of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Um, Mr. Stewart, do you receive the same supporting documentation as outlined by Councilwoman Fareed? I know that you mentioned that Glen Arden Day, uh, is, uh, basically a standard by which you would like to have everything.
Uh, and I would say yes, um, because with Glen Arden Day, they actually did a, um, a plan and, um, execute, and that is good. Now, with regard to the question that, um, Councilwoman Fareed, um, she and I actually did some work with regard to that program she just spoke about. And she was able to provide me with information with regard to, um, what was given, what was received, and how we actually distributed those. Um, she actually gave me names, and I was saying I don't necessarily have to have names, but, um, at least addresses us to, to make sure that we are covering our citizens. Um, with that, um, it's kind of tough getting that kind of information from, um, from other sources and, um, and I'm still pushing to get that information, especially for twenty twenty three.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, do you receive the same love, support from the executive office? Just a yes or no question.
Uh, no, I'm still waiting.
Thank you. All right, so I want to bring this conversation to a close, um, and start making decisions, because I think we've gone on here for about an hour now. Um, and this, we have this one before we go to the topic of discussion about capital projects. Um, so as we move through this, then we'll just go through line by line item, and we'll just get a consensus, and then we'll move forward with that.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mayor Cross, we're about to make decisions on this budget, so I, I've given, it's been an hour. I've given everybody ample amount of time to speak. Uh, you've had several times to speak as well. Uh, I think everyone has said what they needed to say about this. Um, uh, so I'm going to close this part of the session, uh, to discuss the budget and transition to actually making decisions, so we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is only one more piece of the agenda.
There's a point of clarity though, sir.
Having said that, having said that, uh, we'll start and just go through. Sorry, what's that? We'll start and go through. I don't know if there was, um, I don't know if, uh, sorry. Councilwoman Fareed, did all of your questions get answered? Sure.
Sorry, I, I don't know why you tap on this thing so many times, it doesn't unmute. Um, no, I, my question was actually to, in part to, to the mayor around her qualifications for identifying the organizations that, um, would be recipients of the Day of Giving.
Mayor Cross, your response to the criteria that. Mary Cross, your response to the criteria that Councilwoman Farid mentioned?
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman Farid. Yes, there are criterias, and it's based on the amount of calls or the amount of requests for support that come in. Um, over the year of two thousand and twenty-two, we had a lot of calls for support that came in from Glen Arden Hills, which is why we did Giving Tuesday in Glen Arden Hills. Uh, a lot of the residents were complaining about the care, complaining about. So it was an opportunity for the city to get in there, to show love and also to receive feedback from our citizens. And we were very successful in that event. As I stated, set, uh, all one hundred units were served. Uh, you know, over two thousand and twenty-three, uh, we went into the veterans because we were getting a lot of calls, uh, for different, you know, security issues or, uh, community, uh, support issues, so that we can hear. Uh, so Giving Tuesday is about the executive branch, you know, caretaking of the citizens. And I just, you know, want to acknowledge again, uh, for the treasurer's statement, uh, there was no money provided outside of the two events, and then the budget was taken. So, um, the need to know is relative to the money provided, uh, and the city didn't know.
Wonderful, Mary Cross, thank you very much for answering the question, uh, and and thank you for the, the extra piece. Because I think that in our capacity, in our capacity as elected officials, there's always need to know, because we answer to the citizens. And so when a request is asked, hey, can you provide support for this? Can you provide support with the receipts? Who, who were the donors? You know, who were the recipients of these? And to be constantly met with, you don't need to know, you only need to know basis. Well, that's not transparent, uh, and that's not, uh, our, our responsibility goes deeper than that as elected officials. Everyone needs to know, the citizens need to know. Uh, and so I just disagree with, um, with that point, even if the, the amount of, uh, events that were held were only limited to two. Um, we need to know, uh, even if there, you know, eh, you were able to bring in, if you didn't have any more money, but you were able to get donations from other places to have things in-house. Well, as the elected official, if you're getting, whether it be money, whether it be TVs, whether it be things of, uh, material value, well, that's an in-kind contribution to the city of Glen Arden. And so the treasurer needs to know, because that creates, um, accounting entries that we need to account for. Uh, and it also protects elected officials, will protect you to make sure that we're being transparent with the things that we're receiving. Uh, and then we have an idea of who are the citizens that are being, um, uh, recipients of, uh, these items. So I I just disagree, uh, with that notion. But having said that, now we're going to get to, you know, make a decisions on this, uh, is there? Oh, there's one more thing. I did not see, um, I know in a legislative budget, memberships is broken out. We all get memberships to M M L, but I did not see a breakout, uh, for memberships for it to be increased from fifteen hundred dollars to three thousand dollars. Um, and so, uh, is there a breakout for this three thousand dollars?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, there is a breakout, it's just not there on the budget, but that has been provided for each of those items in an email documented. And we'll make sure.
Thank you, Mary Cross. Um, uh, un- until then, I'm not comfortable raising this to three thousand dollars. Um, and so I really don't know what to do with that. Uh, Mr. Stewart, do you have that email?
Um, thanks for the question. Um, with regard to any information that I get with regard to the budget, I copy and paste into the, um, detail section. I will though, go ahead and go back to that email and see if, um, if there are, um, values to these, uh, membership dues and fees. But I normally just copy and paste information into the details, because I don't want to change anything.
Okay, thank you. So I'm requesting that we get details for the, uh, well, not so much so for the conferences, because, you know. Who knows what conference the mayor may want to go to, but definitely the detail for the, um, member dues. Uh, and I'm sorry, I missed your hand, uh, Vice President Ferguson.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to, I was gonna, um, ask to address the membership, uh, and dues, um, also, I, um. I don't think that it's necessary to have membership for every organization. And then I noticed that in the last, the second to the last line, it has, um, uh, G S A, uh, looks like professional development training for a support staff. Um, I really think that, um, it probably should go, go back to, um. Twelve hundred or a thousand. No more than, I mean, the, the, to double it, it definitely is, is, is now. And so I don't know, um, what training for support staff have to do with anything, um, as it pertains to, uh, membership and dues, um. Um, come on, understand that there's no staff underneath, um, executive office, so. Yeah, I would take it, um, it definitely not three thousand.
Okay, so would it, would it be sufficient that we just hold off on that line item until we get the supporting documentation? Then we can decide as council before we vote on the final budget of what to include in this line item? And that way we'll know it's not like twelve hundred, it's not like eleven hundred, there are things allocated to actual individual memberships.
I mean, but even with the membership, you don't have to be at e- every membership, I mean.
Yeah.
That's a round, I mean, it's a lot of memberships here. And then how would they benefit the, the city?
And so your proposal is to send it, get it, put it down to twelve hundred?
Um. Yeah, I would take so.
It's fine, is there any opposition to that? Okay, Mr. Stewart, then this line item will be at twelve hundred, um. Uh, were you finished, Council Vice President?
I am, I was just trying to look at, look at, you know, look at ours, I think ours is, um, just a thousand.
Okay.
I'm done.
Alright, thank you. And I breathe a saw your hand, Councilman Jones, before I move on.
Uh, hmm, so here, so, uh, the treasurer, Mr. Stewart is going to provide us with each, like, the National League of Cities, how much it costs to be a member in that, so that we'll know how much, uh. I mean, I I believe that that should be, be, uh, shown. And then you got P G C M A under here, the legislative body also pays for P G C M A. Are we splitting the cost somehow? Or we, it's just, P G C M A should be just one cost for the entire city, not for the, the mayor's office and for the legislative branch. So I would like to see, you know, uh, maybe, uh, each, that we should get an itemized, uh, accounting for each, uh, membership and dues. How much does it cost to be in, uh, a member of National League of, uh, Cities? The Maryland, Maryland Black Mayors Incorporated, the World Association of Mayors, and then the International, uh, Administrative Professionals. How much does it actually cost? What is the cost? The Maryland Mayors Association. So, so you got the Maryland Black Mayors, and then you got the mayor, the Maryland Mayors, okay? And then she's got, uh, M M L Convention, summer and fall, that should be under conference and training.
Okay.
The co-convention, that's, uh, Montgomery County. That should be under conference and training, that shouldn't be under, unless there's a membership associated, uh, dues that are associated with that. But we don't, we don't have that information, so we don't know.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President, I'm not Vice President, thank you, Councilwoman Jones. So there's no opposition to, to putting it to twelve hundred dollars, uh, but we'll still ask for, um, uh, itemization of how that twelve hundred dollars is going to be used for memberships. Um, any opposition to completely removing the one thousand dollars from professional services? Well, uh, Stewart, that'd be one thousand dollars for professional services. Um, I'm sorry?
Yes, um, so twelve hundred dollars for membership and dues. And I must also, um, interit that, um, I will see if I got these, um, itemized. But if not, I will have to get that from the mayor. Um, but let me really check on that, so twelve hundred there, and we remove the professional services.
Correct. Uh, now, I I think I'm the only one who made the, um, the recommendation to keep the, um. Community promotion outreach at the same level as last year. Is any opposition to keep it at twelve hundred? Okay, well, that'd be, uh, put, kept at twenty twenty-three levels?
Yes.
And as, as it relates to computers and printers, wouldn't that be, uh, a capital item?
Um, no, we rewrite those off.
Okay.
Because of their values.
And everybody has a telephone expense line, correct?
Yes.
Alright.
And this is true to offices and so on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and the only other, I'm sorry, uh, Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah, I see, um, camera, um, photo with a video, what is that for? Video capacity?
Uh, Mary Cross?
Sir, um, respectfully, no one else's budget has gotten this scrutiny. Um, the chief was asked if he needed another seventeen thousand for training, and nobody knew what it was going to go to. Um, I find it appalling and egregious what you do, uh, but, you know, going forward, the city needs to be clear, citizens, this is egregious. Uh, look at the other budgets, there are no clarities, there's more clarity in.
Point of order, can we just answer the question, it's getting late?
Yeah.
Camera, photo, photo with video, what is that for?
Mary Cross, if you have an answer for the question, we would appreciate it.
And no one took away your training? Okay, um, no answer, um.
I was muted by the host.
Uh, okay, Mary Cross, if you have a, if you have an answer for Vice President Ferguson's question, she asks, what is the camera photo with video for?
Yes, so the mayor has the support staff, which is the executive assistant. Uh, Jordan McLong is actually part of the mayor's executive team. Uh, so we do not have a photo camera or a video camera capability or a label maker, those things that help us organize in the executive office. None of that exists. So, uh, the photo camera, video camera is things that can help us capture. Uh, we have support staff at the event, uh, and, you know, again, this is something that we've been needing in the city. We don't have any of those things. The one that we have is a point and shoot that's eight years old. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and just a point of information, uh, Mr. McLong is actually, and his job description reports to the city manager. Uh, the executive office does not have, uh, uh, support staff. Um, and, and that's actually written down. And then Jordan's done an amazing job of helping, uh, of helping the office, but he reports to solely, uh, the city manager, uh, Habata. Um, and so.
When did that happen? The mayor has always had an exec.
Point of order, uh, Mary Cross, that, that, I'm going strictly by the job description that is for Jordan McLong. It's always been that way.
Not always, sir.
Thank you. I mean, I. Um, so, so does the city need a camera with a video?
Yeah, that's why it's in the budget, we don't possess any of these things. You know, mayor looks ahead for the, for, for those things, we don't have it. Um, just like we didn't have a sound system or anything, and mayor.
Thank you, Mary Cross, thank you, Mary Cross. Uh, well, with that, then I propose that if, if the city needs a camera, uh, and, and video, then that should be something that, it should be of use for everyone. Um, and, and I, I, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt on your, your point, Vice President Ferguson.
Oh, I was just wondering what it was for, um, and, you know, from an explanation, then that's, um. Uh, it would be, to me, for the city.
Is there any opposition on, on moving that, uh, keeping it? That's fine, any opposition on moving that to the administrative budget for that be a purchase for administration, so that people are here full-time that are involved in different things that the city can use it? Okay, so with that, we'll move the.
I mean, do we really, do we need, I mean, who's going to utilize it? I mean, someone's going to be trained to, is it like a professional camera? Like, a photographer type, um, we have somebody that does that, that type of service? Is that the intention?
Mary Cross?
Yes, we will have someone using it, because we have an ability to, we have to capture these events for our citizens to make public announcements and things that we've done, to support the people. Uh, right now, what we have invested is five, six hundred dollars for like the police events, to try and get D Js, to get photographers, to get folks to capture this stuff. That's not acceptable. The city, um, has people that are out there, as you state, for y'all events. I mean, a camera can benefit anyone.
Thank you, Mary Cross. I, I do have a clear question, isn't that what Mr. Gray is for? Doesn't he suppose, isn't he, don't we have in the contract that he can come out to these events and record it?
Yep.
I mean, he doesn't have a camera. The camera that's in that, uh, TV studio booth is, again, that was probably fifteen years old. There needs to be updated equipment to appropriately support the city, uh, and tell the city's story of the works that's being done. So, no, Steel Beach doesn't have a camera that's worthy. And Mr. Steel Beach doesn't come out in his contract, again, to do photos.
Okay. Alright, uh, Councilmen Jones, any?
I, I think it wa, it is in his contract, he, he will do that if it's on request. And if that's, uh, going to be, you know, uh, a camera in the city, then maybe that should go under the cable, uh, budget. We can use monies from, um, the, um, cable, uh. Uh, budget for any cameras that we need. If that's something that, you know, he, we go back to the, since there's a, uh, discrepancy between, I'm saying that he does come out, because it's in this contract, and it's being said that he doesn't. Then we need to go back and look at the contract and then tell him for certain events, you know, that he will come out and do these events, and what equipment do you need? And if he needs equipment, then it can go under the, uh, the, uh, cable budget.
Okay, well, well, can we land on that? Can we then move this amount to the cable department to purchase a camera for the city that we can use, um, to capture the events that the, the mayor wants to capture? Any opposition to that? Here and none, then we can move the three thou, I'm sorry, Vice President Ferguson. Are you in opposition to it?
No, no, I mean, I'm saying, uh, well. Is the camera and the printer, all of that connected to the, um. The, the, oh, they're in the, they're individual, uh, mayor, you need a printer? What you're saying?
So, um, the mayor's office is, doesn't have a computer system that's younger than eight years old. The system in there barely cuts on. The laptop was refurbished and trashed when, when I received it. The system in there barely cuts on. The laptop was refurbished and trashed when, when I received it. Um, again, that line is the stuff that's necessary to do the business of the people from the executive office. Um, here.
Oh, you didn't get a, I thought you had a, a computer, a laptop last year. You didn't get that?
I know, ma'am. The money was taken out of the budget before the laptop was purchased and reassigned to the police department to purchase them a laptop.
Thank you. Uh, can, Mr. Mr. Stewart, can we price a laptop and put that in the budget for the mayor, please?
Will do.
Thank you. And the balance of that can be moved to the cable department for a camera. All right.
I'm sorry, Council President, do I not get a computer at all?
No, I, I said that the Mr. Stewart's going to price what it'll take to get you a computer. We're gonna put that in your budget so that you can have a new computer. And then the balance of that for the camera, we're gonna send to the cable department. So, uh, we can get the camera for the city. So, yes, you are able to get a computer for twenty twenty-four. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Okay, I'm moving right along. Uh, office supplies, that, uh, label maker that she's got in the support equipment, that can go into the office, the miscellaneous office supplies. Is there another office supplies? What is miscellaneous office supplies? Uh, I can't roll up. Is, is that the only entry for office supplies? The miscellaneous one, or is there other, another entry on her, uh, budget?
No, sir. Mayor Cross, what is miscellaneous office supplies again?
The mayor has frequently requested proclamations for, um, funeral services or for event notifications like, uh, Pride Day or event notifications like, you know, Indigenous People Day or the recognition of our, um, Immigrant Day, which we just did. Those supplies are not free. Over the course of the last year, the mayor has taken that out of her own purse, her own house budget. These are the things that the executive office, uh, is responding to the citizens with, uh, right now. So that's what that, uh, budget is for. That particular parchment, paper, the sleeves, all of that, uh, is clearly something that the executive budget line item should be paying, but not out of the mayor's home budget.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. I completely understand that because the legislative branch has done proclamations as well, and I know that it's not free. So, uh, understand that.
Okay, so the, what I'm saying is the label maker should go under the, uh, it should only, that one, let me see that line.
I don't, I don't think there's.
Support equipment, executive office, computer, printer. Uh, that is one, but the miscellaneous office supplies should also have the label maker because a label maker is nothing but a little, uh, um, you know, a miscellaneous office supply.
Yeah, so we're gonna leave that budget alone. Um, so if she wants to put it down there, then I guess she could put it down there. But, uh, for the support equipment, she's, uh, the executive office has a, is getting a new computer. Uh, and then the balance of it is going to the cable department for the camera that the city, um.
Okay.
That was. Okay.
But I'm just saying for, for ex- that, that label maker should be moved down to miscellaneous office supplies, just for clarity, for the, for the treasury even.
All right, Senator Stewart, please move the label maker to miscellaneous office supplies, please.
Will do.
Thank you. The, the last up is, um, the special events. Uh, there were, uh, couple of opinions on this. Um, I had to write an opinion. Uh, there's some double up on this. So is there any opposition to consolidating the, uh, Harvest Day Rewind and the police event? Any opposition to just consolidating that in the police officer's budget?
Council President, those are separate. I need to speak to that. Harvest Day Rewind has.
One, one second, Mayor Cross. Is there any opposition to that? Is there any opposition to, um, consolidating the, um, the breast cancer awareness?
I disagree, Council President.
I understand, but Mayor Cross, there's order to this meeting. Um, you cannot keep on interrupting. Louded that happened a couple of times, but if you interrupt again, I'm gonna have to remove you from the meeting. Now, there's no reason why we can't all work together. I'm not saying that it should be stripped from the Glenn Arden's budget. I'm saying it's just where there's one effort, we could consolidate it and work together to produce something for our citizens. So this is not us taking anything from the executive budget or you per se. This is not personal. It's just finding where we can consolidate. So is there any opposition to consolidating the Harvest Day Rewind? I didn't hear anything on that. Is there any opposition on consolidating the, um, breast cancer awareness? Uh, and just having it in a legislative budget and the legislative and executive office could work together to bring together, uh, a good event? Here and none, that's passed. Um, and I think the third one was the backpack. Is there any opposition? I would think we increased it on the legislative side, which has been spearheaded by Councilwoman Giallman, Councilwoman Fareed. Is there any opposition to housing it in the legislative budget? Combine that and housing the legislative budget? Here and none, that is passed. Uh, and I think that was the only three things. Is, uh, and the last part, is there any opposition of, of moving the balance of special events to the administrative budget? Sabata?
Sorry, um, question. You're saying moving the, all of the special events from the, uh, executive to the admin budget?
Not all.
Okay, wha- what are we, what are we talking about then?
Uh, we're housing it in, uh, the administrative budget, given that the administrative staff does a lot of work to bring things on. For example, I always see administrative staff at these, uh, special events. And so it's just, you know, I'm pretty sure the mayor's gonna need some help with these things. Um, it is to also help make sure that we get all of the supporting documentation to, and the unnecessary criteria uh, to, uh, put on these events. This does not mean that the mayor cannot be involved with the event. Let me make that clear. She can have as much involvement as she wants to. If she wants to lead it uh, and spearhead it, that's fine. If she wants to put together the criteria, that's fine. It's just being housed in the administrative budget. So it's, it's not to say that, you know, you guys have to do all the work. It's just being parked there.
Okay, um, can you clarify the consolidating that, that, uh, is that going to, you're saying that would go to legislative? The backpack, the breast cancer awareness, the harvest?
No, just two. So the, uh, the breast cancer. No, the breast cancer awareness and the, uh, backpack or back night, let's not call it backpack, the back to school event will be housed in legislative budget. We'll work, you know, collectively with Mayor Cross to bring that about. I'm pretty sure everyone who spearheaded the event will be happy to work with Mayor Cross. Uh, the Harvest Day Rewind will be housed with the police officer's budget because they do, um, I forget.
Truck or treat.
Truck or treat. Uh, again, the police department and the executive office collaborate on that as well. And so those are the three things that will be split out and the balance will be moved to an administrative budget.
Okay, wha- what is the expectation in terms of, uh, the admin? Uh, th- this is primarily to make sure that we get, uh, receipts and all, all of that for all of these.
It's, it's just to provide structure. You guys are there all the time. If, if, you know, I know Jordan has done a lot. Uh, has, has gone above and beyond to get things together, but I know that Mayor Cross is not there all the time. So, uh, just to try to support, again, if Mayor Cross wants to spearhead this, she can still spearhead it. It's, it's fine. It's just being parked in administrative budget. It doesn't mean that, you know, if she wants to be a one man show, she could be a one man show and, and, and carry out the, the rest of the events. It'll just that when things come across, uh, for approval, it'll come across your desk for signature for the items to make sure that we are collecting all the items. So you'll see a purchase order for, you know, uh, the February Creative Youth Arts Summit. Uh, you'll, will have, you know, the criteria and the things that we need to get things through.
O- okay, understood. Uh, just one, uh, clarification. Um, um, Karen Schultz and I are here, uh, and, uh, for the, uh, uh, for the, this review and, um, we have looked at the two thousand and seven and the twenty twenty job spec for the executive assistant. And the language, uh, in the job summary is that the executive assistant supports and assists the city manager and the mayor uh, and reports to the city manager. So one point of clarification in terms of uh, sharing staff, that, uh, that the, the, um, job spec says that, uh, the executive assistant supports and assists both.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that clarification. Uh, I was only referring to the supervisory role.
Oh, sure. Yeah, well, that's clear too. It's position reports to the city manager for reporting purposes.
That, that, that was my only point.
Okay.
So, but thank you for the clarification. All right. I think we've settled on all those things. We spent an hour and a half on, on that last budget. Um, and we're moving on to the next topic, which is a topic of discussion. I don't know if you would, if we knew that, but the topic of discussion is, uh, capital projects. Vice President Ferguson?
Oh, you waiting for me?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I wanted to, um, go back to, um, do, can you put the page up? It's, um.
Page seven.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I was just about to call on you.
Down, um, I wanna go with the, um, the police cars? A hundred and seventy-seven?
Well, here.
Yeah. Um, is Chief Ryan?
I saw him. Ah, Chief Ryan.
Yes. Uh, you had a question about the hundred seventy-seven thousand?
Yeah, good evening. I, yeah, I, I actually saying that we, uh, uh, we purchase two or three cars every year. Um, is there a need for the cars?
Oh, yeah, um, there, there need for the vehicles. Um, I know we, we need to, but I, I gotta look at this hundred seventy-seven thousand because I think I spoke with a council member Jones in reference to that. Um, we were outfitting the sixteen vehicles we had. We have to update the, uh, laptops in them. And, um, we're getting quotes in reference to, uh, the labor and change them all out because the laptops we currently have, they outdated and of course, we don't have a station for these guys to work at, so they have to work on their laptops. So, um, right now, they keep taking their laptops back, the teeth back to try to get them operating. So we're trying to outfit the vehicles with a new laptops and, um, in the stands. So I, I think that's what you're talking about. Um, Dean, is that the line that she's talking about for the hundred seventy-seven?
Yes, and, um, if I could clarify, if you look at this supplement, um, the supplement, um, schedule for capital, you'll see at the first page, um, the police cars and you will see seventy thousand. That's for, um, the upgrade of the other cars. And the one oh seven is for the two new cars.
Yeah.
Now, now these two cars will be, um, will be coming in to replace two of the older cars that we have. We have two cars. One is a two thousand eight, I think, and one is a two thousand three. They are over hun- one of them is two hundred and something mileage on it. And the other is over a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. So those are the two we're working on replacing.
Vice President Ferguson, did I answer your question?
Yeah. Okay, the next the next item is, um, the admin lower, uh, car. Again, normally, um, on these lines, they have if parents, what are they, what's this for, whatever. So, um, city manager, Habata? This question is for you.
I'm here.
Um, and then this is the electric car you were, uh, uh, talking about. Do you have a need for an admin car?
Uh, I don't have a need to have a car assigned, uh, to the city manager, no. Uh, I prefer driving myself in my own car. Uh, in terms of the admin and, and, uh, and code enforcement, um, the, uh, the need is there for code enforcement, uh, and there had been a suggestion that the admin car could be made available for, uh, folks in the admin, uh, department for uh, trips for running errands, going to the post office, going to the bank, going to, uh, buy supplies for, uh, events, that kind of thing. Um, I have not, uh, in a short time here tallied up, you know, who's doing what in terms of errands and what the need is for an admin car. So I can't uh, respond to, you know, the need. I, I don't, uh, can't, I really can't quantify that. Uh, I have not had a request from staff for that.
Thank you, um. Can we go to twenty-three of twenty-three, page twenty-three? Okay, delay, I think that's where the op money is. Okay, right? As a car, admin, who car? You see that?
Yes.
Is that, would that be the same thing?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay, with that said, we discussed this on, uh, last year. Um, and we had agreed that if we purchase a car for admin, it would be for the city manager. City manager has clearly said that there is no need and she doesn't desire one. So I recommended that car be taken out and that forty thousand go elsewhere.
O- okay, ju- just to be clear, uh, you know, in terms of having a, a vehicle for the city manager to use, uh, there are taxing implications of that as a benefit and I just as soon avoid it.
Okay, I'm, understood. Thank you so much. So, um, my recommendation for this is, um, no admin car. Um, because, um, again, um, for going to the post office and picking up supplies and things like that, um, I don't think that forty thousand dollars sitting in the parking lot, they don't, it's not that many frequent, um, post office, um, trips. And, um, the city does offer mileage, um, according to the federal, um, uh, guidelines. So, um, people are compensated if they use their private, um, car. So I recommend that that be taken out.
Okay. Thank you. I- is there any opposition to that being taken out? Council members?
Uh, Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Harry?
Yes, for clarification, so are we taking that out of both places? Because it's in Capitol and in opera?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Can I, can I say something here?
Is it related to?
Yes, it's related to this. So the. Yes, it's related to this. So they, you seen it in opera is saying that we are going to be paying for the vehicle using opera funds. That's why it's there, yes.
Oh, thank, thank you for the clarification. Either way, it'll be coming out.
Just remove it, yes.
Yeah. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I wanna go back to this, um, Mr. Stewart. I need you to verify this again. You said that the police cars, we're gonna be replacing a two thousand four car?
Um, thanks for that question. One is a two thousand four Chevy Tahoe, the one that has the tag number MG twenty-two forty-one that has two hundred and four thousand um two twenty-two miles. It's nineteen years old. The other one is uh, yeah, the other one is a two thousand nine Chevy Impala. Um, the tag number is nine EA P fifty-two and that has a hundred and sixty-six thousand miles on it. And that's a fourteen-year-old vehicle.
Okay, I see, I see that because what you, what I heard, it might be my hearing, what I heard before was uh, I didn't hear either one of those cars, but okay. Now I see him, I see him on the list. I'm looking at their uh current fleet, fleet roster, which I requested and uh just to um see, okay, uh, wait, but so when we get those two vehicles, nobody will be assigned to them because it looks like all the vehicles that we have are already assigned to officers? Or are we gonna be switching them out, the newer vehicles for some of these?
Would be switching them out.
Yes, these cars will be going on the um, the surplus to have them surplus.
No, that's not what I'm speaking of. I'm talking about as far as assignments because all of, right now, all of the ve- then the fleet that we have are assigned to uh different officers, the chief and the lieutenant and the captain.
We will reassign them, yeah. Councilmember Jones, we'll reassign them. And once we reassign, I'll update the list and send it out to everyone.
So the person that has the most mileage, like, uh, I think it might be Lieutenant Jackson, Lieutenant Robinson has because he's using Chief O'Donnell's old car, he might have the one with the most mount, but I'll look at that, okay?
Yeah, he does, he does. Yeah, we got it, we got it all slated out, so I'll keep you posted on it.
All right, sir, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Yeah, um, was that all for the topic of discussion?
Yeah, President, thank you. For me, anyway.
Uh, Mr. Harry, did you have something on?
Yeah, yeah, because I'm, I I, I mean, I know I'm not, maybe, maybe it's late. But every year, we come to this point, those two cars are always being replaced. This is like the third time I've heard those two cars being replaced and they sit on that lot as replacement, to be replaced. Because I know, I know, I could have sworn I heard Chief O'Donnell say, we need to, we need to replace these cars, we need to replace these cars, and I thought they were already replaced. So they're not being used right now. So what we're getting is two new cars that we're gonna just, I guess, going to two extra cars? This is gonna sit on a lot in case they need it?
Well, we all need spare cars, but the vehicles we're replacing now are the vehicles uh that are unmarked. So the vehicles will be used by the officer as marked vehicles.
Okay.
Uh, Councilman Harry, let me say this other thing, because they got two other vehicles here too, two two thousand twelve uh Chevy Impalas that are unassigned. So I mean, those are still, when are we gonna get rid of these vehicles that we're not uh using? Because like, like Councilman Harry is saying, uh, that two thousand four, I I believe I also heard uh Chief O'Donnell say that that needed to go before he left the uh city and before he, he, his demise, so.
Right, so pretty much um, we have two marked vehicles, um, one eighteen and one nineteen with high mileage on them. I think they're two thousand nines. Um, so we're planning on getting two marked vehicles first to make sure. And then um, the vehicle that Chief O'Donnell used to drive, that's the one unmarked that we have to replace that has high mileage and I think uh Lieutenant Robinson is driving that vehicle right now. So and the other one is my old vehicle, the unmarked with a hundred and sixty-seven thousand miles on it. So um, and we, we have um, the marked vehicles, we usually uh sell it to um to another uh agency. Model height got the last, I think, the last two from us, but we're working now on with our grant writer. He's working on um, trying to get us more money for him when we trade him out, get more money um than what we've been getting for him in the past. So we're working on those.
So uh, Councilman Harry, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done, thanks.
All right. And Councilwoman Jones, are you done?
Uh, yeah, yes, sir, I'm, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, are any other comments from the council? Um, let me go back to my agenda, I think that is it.
All right, just one thing, one, one thing is present before we leave capital projects. I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to set aside something for that police building because again, we're asking, we're going around here citizen agencies for grants and money and they keep on saying what is going on in our friend, what is going on putting up? So we need to put something in this budget of what we want to put up as, as, as our, as our share of C money for this police building. And I think we need to start showing that because it's gonna be hard getting anything if we're not gonna show that.
You have an idea?
What if we get back in the old
Million dollars?
Ah, look, great li- great minds think alike.
Which ways?
Yeah, um, is there, and and I I, I'm assuming that you want this to come from the reserves?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that. How much?
A million dollars.
Yeah, I agree.
Any opposition uh to the million?
I agree.
Okay, so we can agree that we can commit a million dollars so that the our other funding partners can know that we're serious about this um endeavor. And uh, hopefully we get, you know, the, the support that we need and that uh Chief Bryant and his officers can hopefully in the next couple of years stand in their own building and, and with some space.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right. Um, with that, the time is nine fifty and this meeting is now adjourned. Uh, next meeting is on Tuesday, next Tuesday for the public hearing. All right, have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night, good night.
Good night.
Good night.